Good evening all. For those of you that can, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
I'm sorry ma'am. Mayor Moreno?
Here.
Vice Mayor Morciano?
Here.
Councilmember Woods?
Here ma'am.
Councilmember Lane?
Here.
Councilmember Litt?
Here.
Thank you. Are there any additions, deletions, or modifications?
No ma'am.
Okay. Well, we have a great presentation this evening. We are recognizing the Gardens Gators for winning the Pop Warner Super Bowl. So may I bring up Daniel Pieto and Brandon Aronson to start, please? Daniel, I saw you. Come on up. Brandon? Come on up. I already stole the helmet. I'm very, very proud of this.
Counsel, good evening. It's been a great season in Palm Beach Gardens sports and to cap it off into entering the new year, we have something very wonderful to celebrate and it's the 2017 National Championship for the Pee-wee Division of Pop Warner Football. And I'd like to introduce the head coach. His name is Brandon Aronson.
Thank you. I'm gonna call up the coaches and the boys. Scott Leesa, Bob Hamilton, Charlie Gideon, Tyler Aronson, Casey Coffey, Malachi Fret, John Gideon, Jackson Hamilton, Trey Kwan Harris, Elijah Hopkins, Hunter Kenny, Ricky Knight, Malachi, I'm sorry, Mackay Lewin, CJ Leesa, Aiden Malcolm, Marcus McCoy, Trent Neary, E.J. Rush, Alex Rosario, Zaini Scott, Tucker Smith, Joey Tushman, Zach Webb, and Michael Wright. Thank you.
All right, team, we're gonna need to make two or three rows. And for everybody in the audience and watching at home, this is the first national championship that we've won out of the Palm Beach Gardens Youth Athletic Association. Very, very proud of the boys.
Job well done, guys.
Alrighty, next on the agenda is Items of Resident Interest and Board and Committee Reports. Rochelle, why don't we start on your end? Anything to report, or you can skip it till next month, whatever? Okay.
I'll pass till next month.
All right. Mark?
Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
Actually, I did want to make a quick shout-out to the staff. The EOC collected a number of presents, gifts, for a lot of the needy children in our community. And the EOC, we were all there wrapping presents. It was an amazing display of how many people gave and how much time the staff gave to wrapping, preparing, and sending out gifts. We were there all together. My wife and kids and I went on another day and thought it was just amazing to see how much hard work the staff did to put together all of those gifts and get them out to the right people. So thank you, and I think it made a lot of people's Christmases special, so.
Thank you. Carl?
Happy New Year, everybody. Unfortunately, I'm not gonna go as nice as everybody else. I've got a couple things to talk about. We know we got term limits again coming up on our agenda to finalize one way or another, but I thought, just like the budget, I usually took my questions out to the public. We have a large budget and I try and get involved with the community on what their thoughts are on budget and allocation money to the police fire and so on. So with this term limits, I don't know if, I'm thankful there's a large part of the community here. I don't know if there's any term limit speakers here. I know there's a few here that I recognize, but I just thought I'd let you know what I've been going through. I'm sure it's a duplicate with the rest of the councils, but I've been receiving countless emails, probably 100 or more over the last six months, and I just thought I'd share with the community on what's going on. So here's, and I'm just gonna briefly, I'm gonna take more than a few minutes because I really want to get it in the sunshine on what's happening. Here's one email, and I'm just gonna touch on a piece of each one. They're all Mr. Carl Woods, blah, blah, blah. But here's one that says, "You will not win in your schemes to attempt to weaken term limits. Our exempt time already served. We're watching you." And that's from a person on Cottonwood. Another lady on Vintage Isle, "I can't believe you have the nerve to scheme and repeal the people's new law on term limits. It would be wise to back off." Another email just like that one. Several of them are duplicate. Another one says, "We're watching you and expect you to do the right thing." These are pieces of large emails, not just one-liners. "Do not insult my intelligence with sneaky tactics to place term limits on the ballot. Our voices are loud and you will not win another time around." One said, "I wouldn't win dog catcher," which I was thankful for that one because I've never run for dog catcher. "So you must hold yourself in such high regard to think we are stupid," and so on and so on. And these are only a small handful of them. The thing of it is, is none of them are true. What we've had is we've had the some sort of national term limits or Florida term limits, and the residences of Palm Beach Gardens that support term limits have either filled out a ballot on a Facebook page or maybe supported by checking a couple boxes on another Facebook page, and then it's, there might be a checkbook, a checkbox that says, "Send your email now." And what they're doing is they're, they may or may not be reading, I don't know if it's legal, I've talked to, I happened to discuss with an attorney what was going on, and it was, he's a civil attorney and he just mentioned that there are many, many, many email laws. So whether this is legal or not, I'm not an attorney, I don't know, so I don't know if them checking a checkbox gives them permission to send these emails. But I started knocking on doors, because when someone tells me they're watching me, they're not gonna need to watch me because I'm gonna be right at your front doorstep. And I have met so many countless nice people by these emails that have said, "I would never write that to you." Today, I knocked on somebody's door and it ends up being a friend of mine for 20 years. I didn't know where they lived. She's in the legal world, and she's like, "We voted for you. We would never, one's a nurse. What can I do to help?" I never authorized anybody to send these emails. So the problem that I have is that we're being asked by term limit supporters to change our minds, to rethink it, and we're getting words that are put into the citizen's mouth that they didn't ever say. And it's either an intimidation factor or some sort of way to get us to change our mind when none of these people are even saying this. They're not authorizing it, and they're certainly very thankful. They're like, I was standing outside Tuesday night, raining, pouring, 40 degrees, talking to this guy on his porch about this email, and he's like, "My wife would never send that." And we ended, I ended up finding all kinds of people that they're like, "I love the city. I would never send this, I would, I support the council." Mark Marciano was mentioned several times because he's responded, they're like, "I did click on a box, next thing you know, I got a response from Mr. Marciano, and he answered all of my questions and I was satisfied." So I wanted to get out of the sunshine on what's happening with these, with some emails, and the Palm Beach Post can easily do a records request for my emails and follow-up if they felt like it. And I just, I'm gonna really abbreviate this at this point. When, back in 2012, long before we got here, the agenda to removing the previous council started by the petitions and getting petitions to sign. Well, it's already known that the term limits people hired people from wherever, namely Miami, to come up here, stand at any given corner, Publix, CBS, and get as many petitions signed as humanly possible. Well, it worked, but the people that signed those petitions, and I'm repeating myself, they're signing the petitions which are a full page, there's two petitions, they're a full page and they're signing them in 20 seconds without being educated on what they're signing. The same thing on these emails, when these people are sending, clicking on a box, their emails are going, now being shared with multiple different agencies, and I don't know if it's identity theft, but that's what the citizens are now concerned of. Language on the petitions that the people signed should have been on the ballot that they voted on. It wasn't the same language, so that's incorrect. The argument, I'm the one that argued term limits in court. I support term limits. The arguments in court were different, were arguing the petition language. It got up to the Fourth DCA. The Fourth DCA is four judges. They have an interpretation of what our charter is defined as a lifetime ban. Well, it's a mess from the beginning to the end. I don't know how anybody would think it would not get on the charter review's radar and report back to us and say, "This is a problem, we need to clean it up, and I'm still supporting term limits. I just think I can do better in three, three-year terms instead of two, three-year terms." We can't get an interlocal agreement signed with the county to put in 40 acres of soccer fields upwards of a year now. And that's just one issue, let alone buildings, the $35 million for infrastructure on your all, on our all's penny sales tax. So I just wanted to get that out into the sunshine that this is what's happening and it's not right. Now I'm in protective mode on every single email I get that's a negative email, I will be knocking on your door. And there hasn't been one person that had said, "Thank you so much for coming to my house and letting me know that this is happening to me." I never authorized that email to go out, and I support the city, I love the city, and I'm one of the people that took the, I'm one of the people that took the 90, in the 90 percent approval rate of the current city council. They said, "We love you guys." So that's all I have to say, I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Carl?
Sorry, it's too long.
I've got Rochelle waving at me.
I just wanted to thank Carl for what he said, and to add that there is also a Facebook ad that is out there with our pictures on it, and to put that out in the sunshine as well, to please be careful what you forward and what you hit send on, and make sure you know the issue and what you're talking about before you send something out.
Thank you. Matthew?
Yeah, briefly, under Items of Resident Interest, usually we've been asked to talk about what we do when we're not here, and I just wanted to talk about several things that happened that were really good. We had an incredible Hanukkah celebration that I worked on with Rochelle and Eric back there and myself. We had, we were able to bring all the temples together. We were able to bring Temple Judea, Temple Beth David, the Chabad over on PGA Boulevard, the Chabad from North Palm Beach, the Chabad over on Military Trail, the Jewish Federation, Meyer Academy, and the JCC, and the Alpert Children and Family Services. And it was a wonderful, wonderful night, and all the council members came, it was pretty good. The guitar playing was pretty average, but...
Matt signed and played the guitar.
So we were able to do that. Additionally, there was a seniors luncheon that we had over at Burns Road where we served as the waiters and waitresses. Service once again was so-so, but the food was very good. As Mark said, we wrapped some gifts, which was really gratifying. And there was also candle lighting over at Chabad, which Rachel, Rochelle and I attended and Jeff attended. So that was a wonderful night, too. So it was a great December, and Happy New Year to everyone.
My list is actually short this month, but then again, I was sick for a couple weeks, so. But there are a couple things that I did want to point out. We had a PBG YAA Glow Golf Ball Event as a kickoff fundraiser for their trip to Scotland. For those of you that don't know, we just congratulated the guys on winning the Football World Series. Well, we have, one of our local golf teams has been invited to Scotland to play in a Ryder Cup format golf tournament because they do so well here. So we had a kickoff, and I would call it more of a friend-razor than a fundraiser, where we basically played glow ball golf on a night like this. It was pretty cool that night. So I just wanted to put that out there because I know you'll be hearing more about that in the future. The toy drive was wonderful, and there are other, there are other people who benefited from the toy drive. I think our city manager is going to touch on that a little later. The holiday luncheon, as Matt said, we filled Burns Road Rec Center with our seniors, and after they were done with lunch, they played canasta and bridge, and it's just another one of the great things that we do here in the Gardens for our residents, and that's probably why we have a 94 percent approval rating. And what's important is police fire and recreation. Those are the three top things that they had on their survey. I also did serve as the guest speaker for the Palm Beach County's North and Senior Center Holiday Breakfast. So there are a lot of seniors out there that are taking advantage of the facilities here in the area, and it's very wonderful to do that. Matt and I also, and Mark, did you pop in at the Palm Beach Gardens Hospital fundraiser? Okay. Palm Beach Gardens Hospital had a fundraiser that benefited Place of Hope, another local agency here, and actually was the lucky winner of three trees, and I think the staff was actually the lucky winner of the remains of some of those trees, the cookies, the candies, the treats and whatnot. But I was also asked to be the guest speaker on Talk of the Palm Beach, which is a new radio show that will be 95.9 next Wednesday night, and we've had a lot of constituent services meetings and League of Cities luncheons and whatnot. But all in all, we are out there, as Carl said, we're out there, we're available. That's one thing that I find, a lot of council members around the county are not available, we are. So thank you for being here tonight. Whether you agree with what we're doing or you don't agree with what we're doing, the city has a 94 percent approval rating, so we must be doing something right. But after that, I now have comments from the public, and I, it looks like I have one, two, three, four cards. Carol Easton, Kevin Easton, Tony Bedala, and Joni Elias. And I'm sorry.
They took the cards away at 7:00 without telling us the rules changed. We couldn't find stocks in the lot because of all the games, so none of us can speak tonight.
Please sit down, Mr. Dinerstein.
I'll just sit down now because I can't speak tonight.
You raised your hand. Did you put a card in?
Yeah.
I filled out a card and returned it to the clerk.
And your name, please?
Nadine Smith.
They're separated by subject, Mayor.
I thought so. Is it for something on, an item on the agenda, Nadine?
It has to do with what Mr. Woods was referring to, the...
That I put you on later on in the agenda. That's for, that's actually an item on the agenda. So for people that are not speaking on items on the agenda, those would be the four that I just read. More than welcome to.
Mr. Dinerstein, do you want to fill out a card and send it to the clerk, please?
I already filled out a card, they wouldn't take it.
Okay, can you send it up to the clerk, please?
Let me see if I still have it. Why would you change your rules like that and not tell anybody?
The standard procedure is cards have to be in at 7:00.
Is the council okay with at this moment changing?
I'd like to see the council vote on that if they want to take and break the rules of the cards coming in prior to the meeting.
Standard procedure is that cards...
You all need to make that decision yourselves as a body, not one person.
Correct. Standard procedure is cards need to be in before the meeting starts, they get handed to the clerk, the clerk hands the cards to me. We did have an exception at last meeting when we, because we were aware that there was going to be a lot of conversation about the charter review, that we took a break in between and accepted cards at that time. That was an exception to the rule. The rule is that we do not take cards after the meeting has started. So it would be up to the council to decide if they would like to take cards at this time and do another exception. So what is procedure?
I didn't mean to speak out of turn, and I wasn't exactly familiar with the rule. At 7:00, it's done. We know why he's here to speak, and it's our last, pretty much our last meeting on the issue, and that's why I brought it up, was it, is it make a difference if we let him speak? I did not mean to violate a rule. So that was my feeling on it. I guess it's up to you four to say yes or no.
My opinion would be, traditionally, the cards have sat there all night. I don't know when a rule was changed. I'd like to see a copy of the rule if it was changed, but traditionally, you've just been able to go and pick up a card even during the course of the meeting and eventually turn it in.
No, that isn't true, actually. Once a meeting begins, we have not taken cards on subject matters.
Okay, is it in writing someplace, that concept?
Yeah, we'll get that to you, okay? But that's the rule, it's been that way for a long time. Now, if the council wants to waive that rule and allow that to happen tonight, then the council can do that as a vote.
Okay, I've always seen the cards picked up, but, okay. I think we should give as many people who want to speak to us an opportunity to speak. I mean, it's a good idea to give as much information as you can in order to make a reasoned and thoughtful decision, and I would welcome anybody who wants to come, to come and please speak to us, we can learn from you.
Rochelle? Mark?
This is our second reading on whatever items. We may as well, I think we should allow anybody that wants to, I don't want anybody to think that anything is, that we are not trying to be open, being available, have access to whatever questions you may have. I don't want anyone to think we've worked really hard for seven months to put this language together. We debated it many, many times. So we've come this far, we may as well allow anybody to make any last comment, because I don't want anyone to come to us after the fact and say that we didn't let them.
And Maria, I apologize for that, but I think if we're gonna make the exception this time, then we're also gonna table, table the information to you now that I'm better educated on a rule that I wasn't familiar with, that going forward in the future at 7:00, it will be cut off as what is in writing. So I, again...
Is there anyone else who did not get to fill out a card that still wants to speak?
Thank you. At this time, well, it sounds like the consensus of the council is that...
Would you like to make a motion, please, that tonight we'll waive the rule on the comment cards?
May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion that tonight we waive the rule on the comment cards.
May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. So, back to items of, comments from the public that are items that are not on the agenda. Carol Easton, please. Name an address for the record, please.
Hi, Carol Easton, 8342 Sunset Drive, Palm Beach Gardens, 33410. I haven't done this in a while. I've never spoken in front of you guys, and it's almost, it's kinda good to see you up there. I haven't been here since you've taken over the administration. I did speak several times to the old one, and it was, it was tough. It was really tough. Probably one of the hardest things I ever had to do was get up here and try to fight for what I felt I needed to fight for. And I felt, and I really do believe that as a result of me coming to them, that I, myself and Kevin, were bullied. I know that this is not, not your guys' doing, you had nothing to do with it, but now the result of everything that happened then is transpiring now. We went to mediation over a lawsuit that we had filed against, or planning to file against the city, and this is after, this is like eight years of my life. Unbelievable amount of stress for somebody like me, you know? I'm not a politician, I don't like speaking in front of people, none of that. I'm more of a healer. So we went to mediation, and we ended up mediating with Max and Ron Ferris, and they were there before, and so nothing new came into that mix. And after all our effort and all the money we spent on lawyers, it was like they had a gun to our head because they came in there with a preconceived idea of how much they were gonna let us get away with, or, you know? And I do believe that if we had gone to court, we would have won, because we didn't do anything wrong. And I understand that none of you could really discuss this with me before because we were suing the city, but we have dropped the lawsuit, and I am begging you to look into the matter at hand and see why, see, explain to me why a $40,000 penalty is justified on us. I mean, $40,000, I mean, that's more than I've ever made in a year, and all we ever tried to do was to make that neighborhood better. I tried to save the trees, you know that, Maria, we talked about that, and I know you said that the trees had to go. I mean, but that's the only comment I've ever had from any of you about this, is from the mayor, and that was by somebody else, "Oh, tell Carol the trees had to go." But you don't know, because none of you have really listened to everything that has transpired. I mean, you have other things to worry about, but right now, I am just really, really begging you to come down and talk to us and see if we can't just make this a wash or at least allocate the $40,000 that we worked so hard to get to continue to improve that neighborhood instead of just being used to penalize us and to bully us. So what do you think? Any of you willing to talk to me? Is anybody willing to talk to me?
At this time, we do not address comments.
This is killing me.
You can stay until the end of the meeting, that's when we will, we would address comments.
Good evening. For the record, Kevin Easton, 8342 Sunset Drive, Palm Beach Gardens, Florida. Never in a million years would I have thought that by my initiating a drive to help my neighborhood become part of Palm Beach Gardens would it have come down to this, okay? You all know me, I've been on the campaign trail with all of you except for Maria and Carl, but we go way back, okay? But the thing is, all I've ever wanted to do was make my neighborhood and this city better. I believe I've done that with my initiative in bringing water to the city. In fact, I think it was, the property values went up from... from 8.5 million in two, in 2015 to over 14 million, and, and the taxes that the city's received for perpetuity have also gone up, okay? But in the, in that time, and again, none of you guys were there. But I believe that the former council, or maybe some of the staff, maybe down to somebody in code enforcement, didn't like me. And so, they came after us, Carol and I, and they've caused our life to be very miserable for stupid code violations that, that happened in 1997, okay? They, they came after me. Our city attorney took my right away to go in front of the special magistrate, the code enforcement special magistrate. Everybody gets that right. But he forced us through. And, and we had to go to mediation, okay? And whether we paid the $40,000, or I spin the dice, and I had to pay 375,000, because the fine was $175,000 for a gazebo that wasn't in the right place, okay? It's totally ridiculous. What I think we need to do is appoint somebody from this council to oversee the code enforcement special magistrates division and see what's going on. I think you need to put the video on, not just the audio, because when that code enforcement, the special magistrate heard, I think it was 12 or 13 violations against me, by the end of that day, he has, he was cringing, okay, because he had had enough. I've had enough, and that's why I settled, and I took whatever they were going to give us at the bottom line. But I still think it's totally unfair that you're going to fine me $40,000 for a violation that was not a safety violation, okay? Speeders, speeders travel down the road. They get fined maybe $500, okay? That's a safety violation. I did not have a safety violation. It was a gazebo built according to them in a wrong spot. But nobody came down and measured it. Nobody knows for sure, and there's nothing on record. But the city just trampled over us, okay, because there is nobody on this council watching the code enforcement. You have boards for everything else, but nobody is watching the code enforcement violations or the special, or the, even the ordinances. I think these ordinances need to be looked into, and I think the fine should be appropriate to the crime, okay? $40,000, it was 175. $40,000 is too much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin. Anthony Badala.
Anthony Badala, I'm here as president of PBG YAA. Live at 13321 Rolling Green Road. I'm here to thank you. Thank you for the vote last time. It was 4-1. Wish it was 5-0, but I think if we had to do it again, we'd probably have a 5-0 this time. But you could see the success of the program. You could see the kids between the golf we just added. We worked out a deal with the city where we took on the golf program and all these other things. But I look forward to being at the county commission meeting. I know Mr. Marino's going to be there. I don't know if any other commissioners are going to be there, but I look forward to seeing you there and hopefully putting that past the finish line and start the construction on this so we could add to our programs. Some of our most successful programs are strangled with space, and this really gives us the air we need to, to grow those programs and keep these kids doing something positive. And that's what this whole thing's about, you know? And it gives me joy to do all the, the donation of time, money, and everything else. You know, thousand, thousand people volunteer their time into this program. We got 5,000 members in this program. So, I just want to tell you, it's a wonderful city. Thank you. Term limits, I just want to make a comment on that. I can't comment two or four, but with the PBG YAA, we try to do the same thing as far as term limits. You realize that sometimes the limits that they want to put on isn't enough time. Some of my most successful programs have presidents that have been there for a lo, long time. The continuity of that program is the success of the leader. And that, that's probably going to be where I am, five, six years from now, still running this thing, hopefully in a positive direction at that time. If I, if it's not going in that direction, I'll step down voluntarily. But, and also with the annex, if you do annex anything, I just moved out of the city, Rolling Green Road off Ellison Wilson Road, I'd welcome it. I miss the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Toni. Joni Elias. Don't make us cry.
I can promise I won't cry. And Eric is, is my backup. Joni Elias, 1009 Diamond Head Way. And I have been, this past year, I have been unable to come to council meetings. Bernie has not been well, and it has come to the point that we are going to have to be moving to be closer to our daughter. So, we will be leaving here within the next couple of months. I attended almost every city council meeting for over 23 years. So, I've watched people come and go. I've watched this wonderful city grow because of the great staff and the council members. I have always been opposed to term limits. I will continue to be opposed to term limits because term limits are determined at the ballot box every time people go to vote. And people go to vote if they are intelligent enough to know who they want to vote for. Term limits are something that just is not right for this city, but we'll not get into that. And Carl, I thank you for really letting people know that all of this hoop-la-la, everybody's against, for it, is not quite right. This city has grown in the 25 years we have lived here. We moved here mainly because of golf in PGA National and five golf courses. The mall was very young. We didn't have legacy. We didn't have downtown. We didn't have midtown. We didn't have the, the over, the flyover. I've watched this city grow to be a wonderful city. And I say to the people that are objecting, not necessarily objecting, showing really almost hate for each other and the city. Were you here when we started this city? If you weren't, why did you move here? 20 years ago, we were not the size we are. There is something that happened in the, to this city, in this city, because of the staff and the council to make people want to move here. Keep it up. Don't get intimidated by a small group of people, because we can fight it, and I'll keep track of what's going on when I'm in Pennsylvania. Love you all.
I love you too, Joni.
City manager's report.
Tough act to follow here. I would like to bring to your attention three items. First, I would like to have Police Major Paul Rogers front and center, please. Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Major Rogers is a homegrown result of many years of police work. I believe you started in the explorers, didn't you? I'm happy to announce that Major Rogers has just graduated from the 270th session of the FBI National Academy in Quantico, Virginia, held from October to, through December. Less than 1% of law enforcement officers throughout the United States has experienced this advanced training and leadership development opportunity. Major Rogers attended specialized training in leadership, counterterrorism efforts, advanced media communications, and narcotics, narcotics investigation. He received 17 educational credits from the University of Virginia. The academy concluded on December the 15th with President Trump in attendance and graduating the students on, congratulating the students on their successful completion of the academy. I would like to point out that Major Rogers joins a very unique and exclusive club here in the city of Palm Beach Gardens. We have five other staff members that have achieved the graduation from the same academy, that being our own Chief Step, Assistant Chief Shannon, Assistant Chief Storms, Major Pay, and Major Betchel. Here you have a photograph of Major Rogers and Christopher Ray, who is the director of FBI, and he's congratulating. I would like for you to join me in congratulating Major Rogers on this most exquisite achievement. You want to give a 20-minute speech, or you? You got it.
For the record, Major Paul Rogers, Palm Beach Gardens Police Department. I'd like to ultimately thank Chief Step for affording me the opportunity and sponsoring me through the academy, as well as my supervisor, Assistant Chief Storms, for also helping me through. And of course, Mr. Ferris for signing off on it and letting me go away for three months and attend this amazing experience and receive this advanced training. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
To continue, each year, our police, fire department, and other employees from throughout the city work tirelessly to produce donations of toys so that those in need will, will get a little bit of help during the holiday season. This year's Holiday Joy Drive benefited over 1,600 local children. That's 1,600 local children. This has been our tradition now for 16 years. But this year, with our community hosting displaced victims of Hurricane Maria that devastated Puerto Rico, the joy drive became even more meaningful than ever before. This created an opportunity for Palm Beach Gardens to show that community does mean more than just our city, city boundaries. I'd like to show you an illustration here, a clip from Channel 5 News that says it better than I could possibly say it. This aired two weeks ago.
Christmas time, is it the same for families from Puerto Rico who are here in Florida now after they lost everything to Hurricane Maria? Some have been staying at the Doubletree Hotel in Palm Beach Gardens thanks to FEMA funding, and their kids are getting schooling here. Now, the city of Palm Beach Gardens has stepped in to bring them some holiday cheer. This Channel 5's Amy Littman shows us Santa's early arrival for these families.
Santa typically drops down chimneys to deliver toys-
We love Santa.
-right to children's living rooms.
Usually, I bake cookies for Santa.
But what happens when those kids are from Puerto Rico, and they're not only hundreds of miles away from home, but also their homes are destroyed?
It was devastating. We lost, we lost a way of life.
Christmas is a hard time, because we, you know, we lose part of the house.
Luckily, in Palm Beach Gardens, Santa has a lot of helpers in blue.
And some of our gentlemen are here right now who collected all of these toys.
The Palm Beach Gardens Police Department has an annual toy drive, and all of these kids were on this year's nice list.
So, we wanted them to feel special and have a sense of normalcy.
One by one, each child got called up to accept a mountain of presents. Of course, they couldn't wait to open them and to play with their new toys.
They're awesome. I finally got more than one thing to show that I love Star Wars.
Home or Not.
It makes us feel much at home.
The Christmas spirit-
Merry Christmas.
-still found them.
A lot of people want to make us feel comfortable and happy. So, thank you, everyone, for this.
In Palm Beach Gardens-
Merry Christmas.
Amy Littman, WPTV News Channel 5.
And finally, I'd like to point out to you, I hope you had an opportunity to see the new brush trucks that the city bought. The fire department here in, in the city, you know, they're all about fire prevention, saving lives and protecting property. And those trucks will come in handy in the event that we have another brush fire like we had last year. In addition to that, as far as public education and public safety is concerned, on your consent agenda tonight is the purchase of an education trailer. And we're really excited about this, and I thought it was best to bring this to the attention of the public so they'll know what we have available to help them. And I've asked our purchasing director, Kumra, to come forward and talk about the purchase. And Fire Marshal Dave Dorita will tell you and explain to the public what this trailer will be used for. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. For the record, Kumra, purchasing and contracts director. With me is Fire Marshal Dave Dorita from the fire rescue department. This is a very short PowerPoint. The fire rescue department wanted to purchase a public education trailer, and they needed this trailer to be compatible with the equipment, the training equipment that they're using at the public safety facility on Richard Road, so that the training modules could be interchangeable. So, what you have in front of you on the consent agenda is an agreement to be approved for the purchase of a public education trailer. It will look something like this. The fire marshal will give you some technical information of what happens when they bring this out to the public as an outreach.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Dave Dorita, Fire Marshal for City of Palm Beach Gardens. What you see are several photographs, actually from the Bullock's trailer on the, my right side of the screen, the smoke coming under the door. The NFPA, National Fire Protection Association, is a big push, and as you know, we did a, a very large event in Paloma. We pick a neighborhood every year to do the Edith Drill, exit drills in the home. That's targeting the young children at a very early age to teach them how to get out. The majority of home fires start in the kitchen, so this trailer will have a kitchen. It's a 21-foot trailer, have a kitchen and a bedroom. As you can see, they actually pumps in theatrical smoke, same smoke we use to train at the fire academy. It pumps it in under the door. The smoke would then trigger a actual working smoke detector in the bedroom. A, children would be in the bedroom with a public educator from the fire department. The smoke detector would go off. The door actually heats up to the touch, so the child is taught to go to the door, feel the door for heat. If the door is hot, they do not open it. And then they are trained to use escape ladders, which is what we practice when we do our neighborhood drills. The other part of that, to the left side, you see the kitchen. It has an actual kitchen with a electronic oven that simulates fire. We use fire extinguishers that are actually infrared now, so we don't discharge the heavy chemicals into the air. They use an infrared beam, almost like a laser tag game for the children. And we teach people how to use the fire extinguisher properly to the, put out the kitchen fires, where the majority of home fires start, and that's the leading cause of home fatalities. So, with that, we can bring this trailer now to all the schools. We can establish it at the Green Market and attack a wider audience, bringing back public education, which, as you know, we lost in 2008. So, this is our big push. It was a recommendation in our recent reaccreditation from CFAI, our accrediting organization, that we improve on our pub ed, and this is a very, a very big step for us in doing that.
The trailer will also have air conditioning and be approximately 20 feet long. It uses, as I said, it uses props that are compatible with what we're going to use at the public safety center. The cost is about $85,000, and it's already a funded item in the fire rescue department's budget. Any questions?
Thank you. No, that was fabulous. All right, actually, any questions? Thank you.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Wonderful. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. May I have a motion and a second, please?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next agenda item will be ordinance 24, but before we get to that, we are holding quasi- Next agenda item will be Ordinance 24, but before we get to that, we are holding quasi-judicial hearings on the following case. Ordinance 31, 2017, Second Reading of the Rezoning Request for the Fleet Operations Building. Resolution 5, 2018, Fleet Operations Planned Unit Development. Ordinance 3, that should be 2018, Update to the Comprehensive Plan, and Resolution 3, 2018, Artistry Location Within Alton, PCD, Parcel G. This means that the City Council is required by law to base its decisions on the evidence contained in the record of this proceeding, which consists of the testimony at the hearing, the materials which are in the official city file on this application, and any documents presented during this hearing. The council is also required by law to allow cross-examination of any witnesses who testify tonight. Cross-examination may occur after the staff, the applicant, and other participants have made their presentations and will be permitted in the order of the witnesses' appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing in order to be able to respond to any questions. If you plan to testify this evening or wish to offer written comments, please fill out a card and give it to the city clerk. The city clerk will now swear in all persons who attend to offer testimony this evening on any of these cases.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God?
Patty, would you read the title for Ordinance 24, please?
Yes, ma'am. Ordinance 24, 2017, An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, Annexing a Contiguous and Compact Area of Unincorporated Real Property, Comprising a Total of 1,371 Acres More or Less, Commonly Known as the Bay Hill Estates, the Preserve at Bay Hill Estates, and Rustic Lakes. In accordance with Section 171.0431, I'm sorry, Florida statutes, such parcels being generally located on the south side of North Lake Boulevard and adjacent to the Ibis Golf and Country Club, as more particularly described herein, amending Article 2 of the City Charter to redefine the corporate limits pursuant to involuntary annexation, calling a referendum on the question of annexation for the registered electors within the property proposed for annexation, providing for transmittal to the Florida Department of State, Florida Governor's Office, and Palm Beach County, providing a Conflicts Clause, a Separability Clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for the purposes.
Thank you. I will open the hearing. Sorry? Has anything changed since the first reading?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. Happy New Year. Peter Hoffine's Planning Manager here at the City of Palm Beach Gardens. There have been no changes since first reading. We have provided the Mayor and Council an update on the annexation timeline, noting notification dates, public outreach dates. Should the Council have any questions on that, staff's available to answer those. And staff has a presentation that is similar to last time and is prepared to give a presentation if it's at the pleasure of the Council. Thank you.
Would anyone on the Council like a presentation redone? All good? All right. I do have cards on this item, so remember, we are at a three-minute time limit for speakers, and I have a lot of cards, so I would appreciate if you would keep your comments within the three minutes. And Al Malafato, George, I apologize, Hudson?
Hudson.
Hudson, and then Bob Klein, and then I'll continue. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the Council, good evening. My name is Al Malafato. I'm with the law firm, Louis Longwin &amp; Walker, in West Palm Beach, and I represent Rustic Lakes Proprenors Association. I'm here to let you know tonight that Rustic Lakes is not a post-annexation, but they would really like more time to be able to understand how this is going to affect them. They felt like other communities adjacent to Rustic Lakes have had a lot of time to deal with this with the city, but that we have not had that opportunity. We have had several meetings with staff on a few occasions, but really, not all questions have been answered. As you probably know, Rustic Lakes is not your typical Palm Beach Gardens community. It's a semi-rural, or as a planner say, ex-urban community. There's wildlife there, a lot of farm animals are kept, and they have a semi-rural-type lifestyle. So they really are concerned about how annexation might affect their lifestyle and their way of life. So what our ask is tonight is that you postpone, you don't take final action tonight, you postpone the referendum, and give them a better opportunity to meet with your staff and have an understanding of the ramifications of annexation and what it really will mean to them. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
George Hudson, please.
My name is George Hudson. I live at 8065 112th Terrace North, West Palm Beach, Florida. It's Rustic Lakes. I bought my property there in 1975, and I built my home, CO, in 1983. I've been there years, and I can live any place I want to, and I choose to live in Rustic Lakes. On the time issue, I brought this to, I've sat on the board there for many years. I have served as a president at one time, Secretary-Treasor another, Treasurer, Board Member, and I've been there for years, and I have worked doing things for the community. I brought this, I had a trip to India in September, and I brought this to the board's attention in August, that this annexation was taking place, that I had been talking to some people in Bay Hill, and that our board needed to get on board and get the neighborhood on board and check into what was going on with this annexation. And I will say, I sat on the committee, and I have met with, we have met, the three of us, we have met with every one of the Commissioners, the Mayor and the Vice Mayor. I believe there is one, Matthew, we didn't have a chance to meet with you. You did get back with us, but we just didn't have the time to sit there with you. But everybody else we met with, we met with Todd and Engel, which is one of our neighbor's sons, my neighbor's son. And so we have been talking and speaking with the Commissioners. They've been forthright with us. We also met with the attorney. They told us what their plans are. So I wanted to let you know that I think that's important, that the committee and everything we did, we took notes at every meeting. We were real thorough before one of us sent out the notes, one person sent them out, all three of us checked to make sure the notes were accurate, what was said, we all agreed to it, and we disseminated this information to our community. It isn't that we didn't. Now, before us, there was another committee that was also involved in doing the same thing that we're doing, but they didn't have an opportunity, or they didn't sit down with the Commissioners and the Mayor. And that committee was disbanded, and they set us up. But I do appreciate the time that you've spent with us, and we have disseminated that information to our community, and we will continue to do that. We haven't disseminated the information that we got here in the last two days, but we will be giving that. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, George. Bob Klein, Jonathan Edelhart, and then Louis Oxnerad.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen of the Council. I'd like to wish you a Happy New Year. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Got to put my glasses on.
My name is Bob Klein, and I live in Rustic Lakes, and I'm speaking for myself at the moment. I have lived in Rustic Lakes for 35 years. I have six acres, and I want to keep my homestead exemption in residential agricultural on my six acres. I understand Palm Beach Gardens won't write their new rules until after the annex. This little, next little item, I don't think there's a single person in this room would sign a contract without a dollar amount on the contract. So that leads back to Palm Beach Gardens. You want me to vote yes or no for the annex, but there's no guarantee contract for yes or no till after the annex, and at that moment, I'm going to have to vote no. Rustic Lakes should have their own vote, yes or no, separate from Bay Hill. I like my lifestyle. I'd like to keep it that way in Rustic Lakes. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Jonathan Edelhart? Jonathan, am I pronouncing your last name properly?
Edelhart.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Jonathan Edelhart. I live in Rustic Lakes. I do want to thank the Mayor and several of the Council members who met with our community over the last couple of days for us to, you know, share some of our concerns and questions and get answers. So definitely appreciate you guys accommodating us. I know it was a little tough, I think, before the holidays. You know, for me as a resident in Rustic Lakes, you know, one of the things is, you know, we would like more time because we really have just gotten a lot of the information, you know, just recently. You know, we did retain an attorney to give us some guidance, which really just happened in the last week of what the effect is. I know a concern for me and some of the residents, not just in Rustic Lakes, but also with Bay Hill, is some of them haven't really delved into some of the specifics, and one of the things that, you know, we discussed with the city this week was the losing of the debtor's right in homestead. So anyone who, Bay Hill has an acre, or anyone in Rustic Lakes who has two and a half to five acres, is, you know, we have a castle right now where if something goes wrong and we're sued, we will not lose our homes in a lawsuit or in bankruptcy, but with this new annexation, we would lose that, and the city also, you know, was transparent and, you know, confirmed that for us, I think it was last week, too. And so for us, you know, we, you know, we wanted to also see, is there something within our association we can do with even maybe changing, you know, zoning within our community, which has two and a half or five-acre parcels, to see is there a way to, you know, change the zoning around the house for half an acre so at least we could protect our homes? Because I love living here. I've lived here, I think, now 13 years, and I would like to have that protection, and that's one of the reasons I live there. So I think being able to have some more, you know, time to evaluate, get more information from the city, look at solutions on how we can protect, you know, not just the lifestyle, but that debtor's protection for both Bay Hill and Rustic Lakes, I think would be really important. You know, and I think, as the attorney said, I think we're not necessarily opposed to annexation. We just want, you know, more time and more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Louis, then Michael Kane, and then Connie Batwell.
My name is Louis Oxnerad. I live at 1133283rd Lane in Rustic Lakes. 35 years, we haven't had any problems out there, and I can't see where annexation is going to benefit any of us. Because I was on the planning zoning board back in the 70s in this city, and I think that way the, they do property that our homestead won't apply for our five acres. That, as I remember, that were half acres all you get, homesteaders in Palm Beach Gardens. And if that's the case, that situation would change for us, and we would be taxed extra for our other property rather than just our homestead. And I would just like to know what benefit are we going to have by being in the city? Thank you.
My name is Michael Kane. I live at 11139 Rockledge View Drive. I am in the Preserve at Bay Hill Estates. I am the Chairperson of the Preserve Annexation Committee. I'm here tonight to look forward to the vote that is happening. I hope it is affirmative. We began our annexation adventure back in June of 2017. We've been working very closely with our community to get the information to them so they can make a decision come March 13th. We've worked very closely with Bay Hill as well. Back in June and July, we did reach out to Rustic Lakes, that far back. Chuck Hathaway, I don't, I think most of you know Chuck. He was our liaison to contact Rustic Lakes. He tried several times, finally made contact. So they were well aware of what we were thinking about way back in June and July of this year. Look forward to the resolution in March. We are beginning our campaign to inform our community, probably beginning next week, and hopefully, we'll be joining the City of Palm Beach Gardens come, I think, May 23rd would be the official date. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Connie, and then Betty Prince, followed by Richard Prince.
Good evening. My name is Connie Batwell. I live at 1127683rd Lane, West Palm Beach, Florida, which is in the Rustic Lakes community, which is a part of the parcel that's being considered for annexation here tonight. I have lived there, my husband and I have lived there for in excess of 20 years. Before that, I lived in Palm Beach Gardens for about 12 years. And I wanted to tell you that there's a lot of talk about the rules and regulations that Palm Beach Gardens have, that we don't want to have, but I didn't leave Palm Beach Gardens because of any rules and regulations. I simply moved to Rustic Lakes because of the privacy and the tranquility that is availed in a, living in a community that has a larger lot sizes in the community. And I still love it. I love the animals, and I love the peace and the quiet. But at the same time, I have to say that I miss some of the types of amenities that Palm Beach Gardens provides, and I think that having those kinds of amenities would be a positive thing to be available to the Rustic Lakes residents as well. I know that there will be probably other speakers here who, and have been other speakers, who oppose the annexation, and I feel that they have the right to their opinions. I have my opinion. I think that we have been given good information by the committee about what this means for us, and I think that with the time that's left between now and March, we still have time to research more if we choose to, to find anything else that we need. But at this time, I would like to tell you that anyone else who speaks to you and tells you that they represent all of Rustic Lakes and that we all are opposed to annexation, that's simply not true, because we all aren't. And there are a lot of other people that I've spoken to that are not opposed to it as well. So with that in mind, I would like to urge you to vote yes for the ordinance tonight so that we can have a referendum in March, and we can all vote, and then we all have our say, which is the way, the democratic way. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Betty Prince, please.
My name is Betty Prince. I live at 1121181st Court North, and I just want to be one of the people to say I am voting yes for the annexation, and I look forward to the opportunity to the vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Followed by Richard Prince.
Same address, Richard Prince. I've lived in Rustic Lakes for almost 37 years, and I've worked with Palm Beach Gardens in the past. I had a business. I've retired. I remember a lot of how we've all grown together, and at this point in time, I might want to get a little more information from the people that I heard speak tonight, but I really don't have a problem with annexation. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon Maxwell Maldonado? I should be able to say that as an Italian. And then followed by Reg Miller.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Shannon Maxwell Maldonado. My address is 1133381st Court North in Rustic Lakes. I also own an addition... I also own an additional five acre parcel in Rustic Lakes on 86th Street. My family has actually owned property in Rustic Lakes since 1972. I grew up out there and remember when there were as many rattlesnakes on the road as people. I am in favor of annexation. I will say that right now. If I truly believed that incorporation into Palm Beach Gardens was going to be a bad thing for our neighborhood, I would never do it. Because what makes Rustic Lakes special is its uniqueness, is the ruralness, is actually all of our neighbors, whether we agree or not. Because everyone out there works really hard to keep our community together. And I really hate the divisiveness that's happening right now over this, but everyone has their own opinion, so you just have to do what you can do. Actually, I am not alone in my support. As Connie said, I have 31 registered voters' signatures right now who live in Rustic Lakes, totaling over 21 properties, two and a half to 10 acres. I have copies, if you guys would like to have a copy of that. Sure, no problem. But I just wanted to present these signatures to you and say this tonight as a way to make it known that we are not all one voice. There are more than, there is more than one opinion. And I have five kids, 22 to six years old. So I have taken advantage many times of this summer camps and everything else, but I pay full price for those. I don't get a Palm Beach Gardens discount. And, you know, maybe it doesn't mean a lot to other people, but it actually does mean a lot to me. Because you guys have great facilities, great programs, and I hope to be able to use them as a Palm Beach Gardens resident in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Reg Miller is my last card.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you very much for having us here tonight and being able to share an open expression of opinions on a very important subject. I am the annexation chairman for the Bay Hill Estates Property Owners Association. We have a very diverse community, just as the Preserve does, just as Rustic Lakes has. There is no absolute unanimous vote anywhere that we would see. I will tell you that the majority of folks from our community would be, at this point, in favor of annexation. Our point here tonight in speaking is that we hope there is no delay in holding the referendum on annexation this March. All affected communities have had adequate time to examine or make themselves aware of the impact of the referendum. Further, all parties have received the same opportunities to become knowledgeable on this matter. A direct mailer by the city in the fall, an initial planning and zoning public hearing in October, another public hearing in December, tonight's public hearing, several offers from the city to make representatives available to residents of Bay Hill Estates, the Preserve, and Rustic Lakes, to completely discuss how the process would work. The city's also ensured, based on the public hearings I've attended and the meetings that we've had with the city officials, that Rustic Lakes will not have to be concerned with losing the lifestyle residents there currently enjoy. To me, that's very important, and it's a very salient point as part of this annexation referendum. Further, there are two full months to get up to speed on this referendum. The only thing that would prevent someone from making an informed decision in that long timeframe is what we would consider, you can fill in the blank there. I have spoken to several members of both Bay Hill Estates and the Preserve today, who indicate two months is plenty of time to get ready for a vote. We have not gone to our community yet to officially solicit any type of annexation education and considerations. We are going to start that in the very near future as well. Therefore, based on these comments and these feelings that I believe are absolutely accurate and true, we encourage the council to proceed forward without delay on the annexation referendum. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on, actually, Max, I have a question for you that came up. What is the constitutional homestead versus the tax homestead implication?
Madam Mayor, actually, both provisions are in the, are in the Florida Constitution. The homestead tax exemption is found in Article 7, Section 6. And that's what establishes the, your ability to have the, the reduction in your assessed value, so it reduces your overall property tax. And that has no, that has nothing to do with the number of acres upon which you live, that you've declared as your homestead for tax purposes. That's the one you actually have to apply for when you buy your property with the, with your local property praiser. Then in Article 10, Section 4, that's the constitutional, the constitutional homestead provision related to, as referred to by Mr. Edelhite, as a, as a debtor's protection. That's, that's as it relates to the ability to protect your homestead from foreclosure or liens against the property for things other than a purchase money mortgage or improvements on the property, like a mortgage lien, or for taxes. So if you were to get a judgment against you, any one of us, if you got a, found liable for something and it was a personal judgment attached against you, you, they wouldn't be able to foreclose on your property to collect that money. And that, with that, now that does have to do with acreage size. Within a municipality, you have up to half an acre is protected from debtors, or from a lien, from a general lien and foreclosure. And then outside, if you're in an unincorporated area, it's up to 160 acres. And so that's the difference. So once, if you have a property that's greater than a half an acre and you're within a municipality, then it, it changes the, that protection under the Florida Constitution. So there is a difference. It won't affect the tax, the tax, annexation does not affect the, what's exempt from taxes, though.
And if a sale is forced, what percentage goes back to the homeowner?
Well, if, if you were, say, just to make the math easy, say it was a one acre lot, and for whatever reason, there was a liability on the property, and they were able to force a sale, in that particular instance, what the courts have done in the past is they have forced the sale of the property, and then the, the half of the proceeds would then be protected from, from the creditor as a homestead. Just as if, even if you, right now, if you, if you were, no matter where you are, if you're in, within or without a municipality, and you had a, a judgment against you. But it wasn't, they, they weren't in a position, because you were under the acreage limits, they weren't able to foreclose on you, and you sold the property. The case law also says that, you know, as long as you reinvest that, that money in a reasonable period of time, it still remains, even when it's cash, it's liquidated, it remains safe from your creditors. But it is on a pro rata basis.
Thank you. Actually, I need to close the hearing. May I get a motion and a second, please?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Actually, we're making a motion to approve, and then we get a second to approve, and then we discuss, and then we bring it back for a vote.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. I will bring it back for discussion. So, discussion.
I just want to capitalize, or continue on your thought. Is there a difference on the agricultural exemption based on what you were explaining
No.
No, okay. So, well, I didn't know if it was smaller, if they're moving into the city, or...
No, I mean, as far as the, you're talking about the nature of the property, again, the staff, when we met with the representatives from, from, from Rustic Lakes and staff, planning and zoning staff, and myself, and we've talked about this, and as we met with each one of you, with, with them, except for a couple of you, we weren't able to be with you. You know, we've expressed that, you know, the intent is to draft legislation that, that once they're annexed in, that it will mirror the zoning that they have now in the county. So it will mirror that. It would just be a city zoning designation so that their lifestyle and their quality of life is not negatively impacted. So they'll be able to continue to do the things that they do and enjoy the things that they enjoy in their neighborhood currently. And, and we also have, want to reach out to them, once we're drafting that legislation, to, to talk to their, their POA and find out if there are things in the, in the zoning district that they're in in the county right now that actually isn't working that well or isn't benefiting them in their community that we might be able to look at to try and refine or improve. You know, but only as it benefits them.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, if we were to grant the request for an extension of time to do this, what would be the effect of getting this proposal on the ballot in March?
It would not be possible.
Michelle?
Well, I think also, if the news, when the new zoning would go through, it would, perhaps, other communities like Rustic Lakes would want to come on board and further increase the uniqueness and diversity of Palm Beach Gardens. I think that's a plus for us, too, and that that zoning is going to help you as well as us.
Mark?
My only comment is, thank you for meeting last night. Alex, I don't know if he's here. There he is. And, and George. I've had a number of conversations with staff, and I met with you without staff. I've never heard anyone in the city make any suggestion or even a hint that they were going to do anything that was going to be against the value of what you currently have in Rustic Lakes. I have 100% confidence that the city's going to do everything that you would want to keep your lifestyle as it is. Our city has always reached out to the residents and tried to make things as good as possible. So, you know, we have to put faith in the, in the process and our staff, and, you know, our city attorney is very good at these types of things, Max, right? So I, I look forward to welcoming you all into the city, so.
Thank you. We did have a lot of information that has been, has been going out since July, including our town hall meeting, and I know a lot of people were from both Bay Hill and Rustic Lakes were there, and that was in October. And I hope that what you have heard from us is that your way of life is protected. We're not there to do anything to change your way of life. And I look forward to having Rustic Lakes and Bay Hill Estates and the Preserve at Bay Hill in the city if that's what they choose. It's the voter's right to choose, and that's what we're giving you. So, having said all that, any more discussion? All right, I'd like to take a vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
No opposed, vote passes, please. Thank you. Okay. Moving on. Ordinance 26. May I have the clerk read the title, please?
Ordinance 26, 2017, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopted in accordance with Sections 101.161 and 166.031 Florida statutes, calling for a referendum to be held on March 13, 2018, proposing to the electorate of the city that the city charter be amended and reorganized in order to adopt and implement the recommendations of the Citizen Charter Review Committee, providing for submission of the proposed ballot question to the electors of the city, setting forth the form of the question to be voted upon at such election, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Okay. So I will open the hearing. Ordinance 26. Has anything changed since our first reading?
No, ma'am.
Perfect. Does anyone here need a presentation on ordinance 26?
No. Well, you know, except, we, we went over at the workshop, the, the
Correct.
Change in the, in the, to be completely accurate, I don't want somebody to say, I just said there were no changes. There was a change in ordinance 26 as it relates to the language to clarify and simplify the ballot, the ballot summary.
Okay, I actually have, so...
But no change to the body of the ordinance, so.
Thank you.
Do you want to read that ballot summary?
I'm more than happy to, if that's the wish of the council. Basically, the ballot summary, it says, first of all, the name, the question is entitled, entitled "City of Palm Beach Gardens Referendum, Question Number One." And the question, and the ballot summary will say, "Shall the Palm Beach Gardens charter be amended to adopt and implement the recommendations of the Charter Review Committee in order to eliminate internal inconsistencies, conflicts with state law, conflicts with the council manager, form of government, and to reorganize the charter to conform with commonly accepted constitutional construction and formatting as set forth in Exhibit A of Ordinance 26, 2017?" And then the question that will be posed to the voters on the ballot, it says, "Shall the above described question number one be adopted?" And then it's yes or no.
Okay. Thank you. I have two cards. Kevin Easton and David Parks. The, Kevin, you said charter resolutions, and David, you said ordinance 26. So Kevin, you'd be first.
Kevin Easton, 8342 Sunset Drive, Palm Beach Gardens, Florida. I'm going to try and address all of these in one, because I know each one of them gets a little bit crazy. But first, I would ask that you table this until everybody gets on board here and this is all figured out. I appreciated Matt's suggestion to move it to two, four years instead of one. I think that's probably the best way. I'm really not in favor of giving anybody any more time. But some of the things that you haven't talked about are districts for better representation, okay? Right now, I've been in the city since 2003 when I was annexed. And every time I come in front of the council, everybody just looks at me like, and stares at me like a deer in the headlights, because nobody wants to take on the problems that I bring to them, okay? When you do that, we, we don't have representation in our area. And it's usually the HOAs that get all of this, that get heard, the rest of the people don't. When it comes to that, we, we can talk about plurality, okay? When we all went and ran for election, well, we all had to run in different groups, okay? Why do we run in different groups if it's just, if you want to go plurality, let's have the highest number of votes, gets the first seat, second seat, and the third seat? Why do we have these districts, these groups when it really means nothing? So you need to look at that and change that, so that more people are represented better, okay? Because, again, as many times I stood here in front of the old council, nobody wanted to address my problems or the problems of my neighborhood, let's put it that way. They weren't my problems. I was trying to make my neighborhood better and the city better. That's all I ever wanted to do, okay? As far as what we should do is, like I say, table this and look at this, you know, with more people. This committee was, was created real fast, and it could have been handled by the old council, but they left it for you, okay? So there's no real need to do this real fast. You've got plenty of time. You've got plenty of time to figure out how to make it two, four years, okay, terms. So what, if somebody gets an extra term, okay? We're not concerned about that. This is going to change, because I'm not sure a whole bunch of them are going to be up there the next time around if you continue to do this right here. There's so many other issues that you need to look at, okay? I would look at where you spent the money, or where the other council spent the money. You've kind of already spent it over the $30,000 for the sales taxes. Again, they took that right away from you to make that decision. That wasn't right, okay? But you need to look at these code ordinances, okay? Somebody needs to get on account, get on a committee and look at this and oversee this, because you can't just let it run rampant, and, and people are bullied by this code enforcement stuff, okay? If they want to target somebody, they can. But I, I do think that representation, you know, by, by districts is much better, and I think that you should look at this two, four-year term, and I think you should table this until you guys get a better, clearer idea of what's going on.
David Parks, 11648 FICA Street. For those that heard Eric Jablin on the evening of November 2nd, you heard him say he supported using this charter process to reopen the subject of term limits. And like he told us and clearly demonstrated, he has privilege. But ordinance 26, ordering the charter to conform to Florida statutes, and that's being marketed under the banner of house cleaning, closes the Jablin loophole to most citizens, because the current charter provision that requires it to be reviewed every five years is made to vanish. And that's a big deal. If the only people that can call for charter review in the future is the sitting council, and you're not in their club, any challenge to their power will have to go through the petition process every time. Only privileged citizens will get to use the taxpayer-funded Jablin loophole. But it doesn't stop there. Other items are made to vanish by ordinance 26. They're just simply not going to be disclosed to the electorate by the ballot question being proposed or by its summary. The most obvious are provisions that govern the city manager. They're all swept away under a broad umbrella of, "It's administrative, and the council will deal with it during the contract negotiations." Hold that thought. At the last workshop, Councilman Woods started to suggest perhaps some qualifying reference could be made. Now, I can't put words in Carl's mouth, but think about what he might have been on the verge of suggesting. It's highly probable that, having worked for the city, he knows competent internal candidates for the position of manager, who spent 20 years in service to the city, but they might live in, like, Boynton Beach, or let's say, Loxahatchee. Could we not reference 20 or 15 years of service as an exception? North Miami's charter mentions a 25-mile requirement. Boynton Beach uses the language, "Must have council approval." Or in North Palm Beach, where we learned the new manager's done a really lousy job of executing of executing his family's strategic plan, the charter reads, unless waived by affirmative vote. Now, why would those cities think that that language is necessary for their charters? Well, we could ask Charter Member Matheson, because when he served on the North Palm Beach Charter Committee, the community where he's homesteaded and is registered to vote, when he's on that side of the intercoastal, manager residency is a really good idea. But Charter Chair Seymour answers my question at the 59-minute mark on the August 29 Charter Review Meeting, where he says, commenting on the manager's vanished performance review, and I quote, "The only way to make sure it's in the contract is if it's in the charter." 50% of cities equal or larger in size to the gardens, excluding strong mayors, have residency requirements. It's actually very common. Selling this ordinance as some kind of housecleaning exercise is totally dishonest when you're really doing so much more. Start over and do it right. Though not professional, we could have poetry in our charter, because as Max keeps telling us and reminding us, Florida statute is what governs the city in a court of law. And Madam Mayor, as far as this business is being concerned about our little city charter, baloney. They want to know how much loot you're going to give them.
Pardon me, I will close the hearing. May I get a motion in a second? Nope. Sit down, Sid.
You told me to submit a card, I submitted a card.
You submitted a card, and it is not on ordinance 26. We're on ordinance 26.
My card says term limits.
That's 27.
Do I get a chance on 27?
You're here.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm only trying to do what the ordinances read. Okay. May I get a motion and a second, please?
I'll make the motion to accept ordinance 26.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. I'll bring it back for discussion. Do we have discussion? Michelle, anything?
Just that, I guess, if 50% of the cities have residency requirements, there's also 50% who do not. And being elected by the citizens of the city to negotiate the contract and the terms with the city manager, they're putting their trust in us to do that, and that's where it belongs.
Thank you. Matthew?
I've had four chances to address this, and I have nothing further to say on the issue.
Thank you. Mark?
I'd like to make a comment, and this is going to be in reference to the four ordinances as a whole, and I'm not going to revisit the things that I've already said, but I think the thing that we, that I think upsets me the most about this whole process is that there's this theory that the fix is in, that we've managed to fix the committee, that we've put in people, that we're going to do our bidding, that we're doing this for our benefit. And the good thing about having had a whole new council with no experience, coming in at the same time essentially, within a year of each other, we don't know each other that well up here, and we don't get a chance to talk to each other a whole heck of a lot until we're in the public. And for those of you that have come to the meeting, or for people that have listened or watched, you've seen a lot of wide-open debate, very raw emotion, a lot of discussion that probably wouldn't have come out if you had a council that was in cahoots with each other. If we really thought that we were doing something behind closed doors, that we were coming to you as a front to put something in behind everybody's backs without anybody knowing, it would not have been as open and honest and sometimes painful to sit here and be a part of. Now, this process has been going on for seven months. June is when we started discussing this, and it was my hope that we could have this done before the next round of elections. And there had been a lot of discussion before we came into here, before the election of last year, a lot of discussion prior to the committee being formed, and a lot of discussion with people in the public. And I don't know how much longer we can spend. We can spend years looking to make a more perfect union, and we will continue to try to make a more perfect union as time goes on. The one person that's sitting up at the dais up here that I thought, that anybody may have thought that I had some type of special relationship was with Matthew. We sat in the council chambers together for years. We got to know each other, and he's the one person who respectfully disagreed with me. And that's okay, because that's what democracy is all about, and that's what the honesty that you've seen come forth. And even though I don't agree with Matthew on this point, the fact that we may have been the two people that might have had the most likely commonality, we didn't at the end of the day, and that's all right. But through it all, the easiest thing to do for me tonight would be to listen to all these emails and buckle under the pressure. And I'm not going to, because the end result is that the city is going to be much better off by having an election and a vote, and I really hope we have a lot of turnout so that people don't think that we're trying to hide it on a March election. I hope we have a lot, I hope everybody out there that has an issue, ask, comes up to vote and ask more people to come out and vote. But at the end of the day, what's best for the city. It's not what's best for me. I really, you know, I've said it many, many times, this is not about me, this is about what I think is what's best for the city. By cleaning up this charter, by putting in real, solid questions and answers out to the public, will allow the city to have answers, and then we can put it all behind us. So, in that, I want to thank my colleagues up here, the city manager for listening to this, the staff for having to put up with all of this, and for everybody in the city who's for or against this, that they've come out and made their opinions known because it has helped the process, and it's been a very open process, and I'm proud of the process, even though I don't always like the way the process went. And that's really all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Carl?
I appreciate the gentleman coming up here and reiterating the fact that the city manager's yearly evaluation should be in the charter and his contract, and I appreciate you bringing up the fact that right now, we're required to be in, the city manager's required to be in the city limits. But I don't agree with it either. I mean, I don't think having it in the charter and in his contract makes it double enforceable. It's enforceable in the contract as agreed when that particular city manager is hired. So, I don't know why it needs to be in the charter and in his contract. Mr. Farish does have, I believe it's July, because I checked on it myself, in his contract for evaluation. We had one last year, we'll have one this year. It's not going to go away if it's not in the charter. I believe because of the way that the city's evolved these days, if we bring in the most educated person, and he happens to want to be in Jupiter because his kids are in a certain school up there or a magnet program, I would disagree with a city manager coming in from Vera or Fort Pierce or Fort Lauderdale. And I think it's, I think it should be up to the council with that particular candidate, can he move within a reasonable area? And I don't want to handicap someone, the best candidate for the city, representing all of us who live here, because he lives in North Palm, which is one street over. So, I vetted those two options, everything else I'm fine with, but I want to evolve with the idea that things change, and I don't think the city manager's evaluation will be any more enforceable if it says it in two places as opposed to one. So, that's how I feel on 26. Thanks.
Thank you. I will hold my comments, and at this time, is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes four to one. Okay. We will move on to ordinance 27, A and B.
You want me to read the both titles, correct?
Please, read both.
Thank you. Ordinance 27, 2017, A, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopted in accordance with Sections 101.161 and 166.031 Florida statutes, calling for a referendum to be held on March 13, 2018, proposing to the electorate of the city that the city charter be amended at Section 4-1 to change the existing city council term limits from two consecutive full terms to three consecutive full terms, providing that the remainder of the charter, as may be amended by the electorate, shall remain in full force and effect as previously enacted, providing for submission of the proposed ballot question to the electors of the city, setting forth the form of the question to be voted upon at such election, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes. Ordinance 27, 2017, B, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopted in accordance with Sections 101.161 and 166.031 Florida statutes, calling for a referendum to be held on March 13, 2018, proposing to the electorate of the city that the city charter be amended at Section 4-1 to change existing city council term limits from two consecutive full terms to three consecutive full terms, and providing that such term limits shall be applied retroactively to city, sitting, city council members, providing that the remainder of the charter, as may be amended by the electorate, shall remain in full force and effect as previously enacted, providing for submission of the proposed ballot question to the electors of the city, setting forth the form of the question to be voted upon at such election, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. And nothing has changed?
Nothing has changed, Madam Mayor, nothing has changed since the workshop, the language that we went over at the workshop, when I explained the difference between the two. And again, what, 27, what, 27B, the second option does, and again, the reason these were advertised is because there was, because of the differences in the title, and the one makes it retroactive. And so, it was important that they be done, offered to you as two different options and advertised that way. And again, 27B is, makes the term limits retroactive, and it addresses the issue with the second, that second sentence in the term limits that was ruled upon by the fourth DCA. And so, the proposed language that would go in the charter if this was passed would now read, "No person may serve as a city council member for more than three consecutive full terms. This limitation shall apply retroactively to all city council members who are holding office as of March 13, 2018." It eliminates the sentence that starts with "service in a term of office" that commenced prior to, and was, that's the sentence that was, the opinion was passed upon by the fourth DCA and is become, is problematic. And also, again, with the consecutive full terms and talking about serving full terms, in ordinance 26, we define what a full term is, and so it makes it clear, it eliminates the ability for somebody to resign right before the end of their term and say, aha, I've left office. It's not consecutive, because a full term is defined as half or more than half of a term, which is very common. That's paraphrasing, that's basically the way it's defined in the 22nd Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. And so, that's why we recommend, the staff, the staff is recommending, I am recommending ordinance 27B, and that's where you had indicated you were heading at the workshop.
Thank you. Okay, I actually do have four cards, and they are Nadine Smith, Linda Monroe, Sid Dienerstein, and Jane Feinstein. So, Nadine, would you please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record?
Nadine Smith, 135 Evergreen Parkway, Palm Beach Gardens, 33410. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, Happy New Year.
Thank you.
I'm a fairly new resident of the city, coming here in early 2015 from the Wellington area, and I wanted the council to be aware that, in my opinion, there may be a hidden negative initiative in the community to undermine the council's process in cleaning up the city charter card language with respect to term limits. Let me explain. I recently answered an electronic online request to remind the council of the importance of the term limits. I completed but a few boxes with my name, address, and zip code information, only to find out a few days later that this generated a form letter that ended up with my contact information. I had not seen nor consented to the contents of the letter, nor would I have sent the electronic information if I had seen the letter. Graciously, I received email responses from Vice Mayor, and I emailed replying him, thanking him for his interest and caring what my response was. I also had a conversation with Mr. Woods, and I thank him for that. My intent was to assure them that I am extremely displeased that the letter that they received was not authorized by me. I sincerely apologize that the contents that were sent do not represent me, and I'm sorry that you received it. But I am thrilled that you took the personal time to reach out to me, a citizen, and help explain and clarify, and help me to become educated on the importance of being active as a citizen of the City of Palm Beach Gardens. I thank you for all your hard efforts in trying to improve what now is my new home, the City of Palm Beach Gardens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Linda Monroe. I live at 619 Hudson Bay Drive, Palm Beach Gardens, Florida. A long time ago, as a member of this council, really long time ago, I proposed term limits. No one wanted to talk about them at that time. I was really pleased when, a couple of years ago, term limits finally did come up in the public, and I was, I was excited that that was finally going to be addressed, but I was dismayed when it was, the proposal was for two, three-year terms. I voted against that at that point in time. I would have preferred what is being proposed today, three, three-year terms for a total of nine years. As you know, many municipalities have two, four-year terms, that's eight years. Six years just is a little bit too short a period of time in my estimation. What you do is you lose a little bit of the institutional history. There's a number of things that you will be picking up as you sit here year after year, and then new people will come on the council, they won't know some of the things that you know. And I was trying to think of an example this evening, and the only one I could think of really quickly, and you may or may not know about this, a long time ago, Dr. Easie came to the city council and asked the city to donate the land that the Easie Theater is now sitting on. It was donated to the city, it was to be used for recreational purposes. I thought that was a rather valuable piece of land to give that away. I really did not like that. The document that was finally approved had some language in it, which at this point in time I cannot remember, that the city had some benefit to that auditor, use of that auditorium. I have to wonder how many staff and council members know what that language was, whether it's been changed or not. But this is the kind of thing, and there's probably numerous things that you will pick up over the years, and I strongly recommend that you approve the language for the three, three-year terms. I do not, however, agree with the retroactive part, and I'm kind of sad to say that, but when you're elected with that lang, with the two, three-year terms, I think you should live with it. And I say that kind of a little disappointed that I've, that I'm saying that, because I do believe in little more longevity than six years. Thank you.
Thank you. Sid Dienerstein.
And Linda, I got your email, and I will not be knocking on your door, so you're safe.
Good evening, Sid Dienerstein, 15 St. George Place, Palm Beach Gardens. Good evening, Happy New Year. Tonight is your last chance to abandon your voter suppression agenda and realign yourselves with the people who elected you. Toward that end, I decided to tell you what good government might actually look like in Palm Beach Gardens in 2018. Number one, we should reinstate the rule that lobbyists may not be on important governance committees, such as planning and zoning or charter review. After all, only one organization is putting food on their table, and that's the one they must serve. Two, we should create a real charter review committee with the following inclusive agenda: create four single-member districts divided by Military Trail and PGA Boulevard create four single-member districts divided by Military Trail and PGA Boulevard, and elect one at-large mayor. Today, two of the four quadrants are totally disenfranchised and probably will be for years. You didn't coerce this form of voter suppression, but you can fix it. All communications from the public should be placed on the city website. All communications from the perceived puppet masters, such as former council members, should be verbally related to the public during these meetings. Less Boy Scouts, more influence-pedling tell-alls. Hiding negative feedback is another form of voter suppression. When the city manager opposes a major council initiative, as is the case with your awful term limit extension proposal, he should say so. If he fears retribution, he should say that too. Free speech and transparency are the enemies of voter suppression. And last, my proposed New Year's resolution for the council: Get off the road paved with good intentions, and on the road paved with good governance. And since I actually unexpectedly have a minute, a minute left, I want to say this: Carl, your comments were so insulting to so many people, aside from the ingratitude of how you got here, but to say that people who signed petitions were manipulated, didn't know what they were signing, they were signing things from strangers who came from various places, let me tell you personally, because when we do stuff, we do it with our money. When you do stuff, you also do it with our money. I went very deep in my pocket for good governance in this city, which meant term limits, which I'm proud to say every one of you pretends to support. We're just differing on the details, okay? When we proposed it, nobody on the council supported it. So that's where we got, and that's what got you. We didn't lie, we didn't cheat, and we didn't insult, and I personally take offense to what you said, on behalf of what turns out to be thousands of people who were supposedly manipulated, because they're just not as smart as you are. Happy New Year and good night, everybody.
Jane Feinstein.
Jane Feinstein, 3666 Toulouse Drive, Palm Beach Gardens. So I want to, again, express my support for the ordinances that council approved at the first, their first readings on December 7th and December 21st. Ordinance 27, businesses and communities like the one in which I live are looking for continuity and stability in our city government. We try to build strong, long-term relationships with our city, both staff and council. Stability helps us plan for our future and to make better decisions. Three, three-year terms would help ensure that stability, and that stability has really been one of the keys to the success of the city over the past number of years. Second, there's a maxim that says that to properly plan where you're going, you have to understand where you've been. I believe this is true of our city as well. Two, three-year terms are not enough time to maintain the council's institutional memory. I think three, three-year terms would be a step in the right direction. Third, running our city is a complex undertaking, and as a result, the learning curve for new council members is pretty steep. By the time a new council member, no matter how involved or dedicated or learned he or she may be, learns the intricacies of our city governance, much of his or her first term has elapsed. City residents should have the benefit of that trip down the learning curve for at least two full terms. My preference would be for 27b as opposed to 27a. I see no reason to lose the knowledge and the experience of all of you, current council members, should you choose to stand for election for a third term. And remember, the voters still have to reelect you. Ordinance 28, this clarifies that termed-out council members should sit out for three years before again standing for reelection, but are not banned for life. I support the ordinance, and I oppose a lifetime ban. I don't believe council members who have termed out should be forever prevented from running again for election to the council. After they sit out a term, they should be permitted to get back in the game if they so choose. Those who wish to serve again should stand for election, if and only if, in the opinion of the voters, they merit another term, they'll win election and return to the council. The voters will still have the final say. There's no reason to limit the voters' options by ordinance. It makes no sense for the city to lose the benefit of the knowledge and skills of a talented council member, or his or her institutional memory forever, just because he or she has already served. And as far as Ordinance 29 goes, I know we're not really on that yet, but I would be in favor of a plurality. I'd rather see the money that we spend on runoff elections go toward providing services to the residents of our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Happy New Year, all.
You too, Jane, thank you. Okay, I have no more cards on Ordinance 27a or b, so I will close the hearing. May I get a motion and a second to approve, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, may I have a second? Okay, we make a motion, okay, 27, this is on Ordinance 27a, a motion to approve, get a second, then discuss, and then we can vote yea or nay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, may I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Okay, so, we have a motion and a second, we'll bring it back for discussion. If this is the, if we choose to vote in Ordinance 27b, then we all should vote nay on this ordinance. Am I correct?
Correct.
Thank you, Max. So, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Oh, I'm sorry, nay on that, I'm sorry. Wrong one, I was looking at the 27b.
This is on 27a.
I apologize.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion carries, a motion does not carry, zero to five. Okay. Now we'll go to ordinance, now we'll go to Ordinance 27b, and I have no cards, because we combined them with 27a. May I have a motion and a second, please?
I'll make the motion to accept 27b.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
I'll make a second.
Go ahead, discussion, all right.
I just wanted to put out there again that throughout my campaign, I stated very clearly that I would support keeping term limits, but that they needed to be modified to provide for the gathering and passing on of institutional knowledge and a staggering of the members' terms. So my current position on this shouldn't be a surprise to anybody. We currently have a situation where the council could turn over every six years. We also have a situation, if left as is, where we have a lame-duck council every three years. That's not an effective way to govern. To those who want to compare our procedures to the county and to other municipalities, I want to say that we're in much better shape, fiscally and in our ability to respond quickly to our residents' needs, than the county and most of the other municipalities. That's because of the form of government we have and the way our staff and the council is able to govern. It takes time to learn, to be able to effectively govern and legislate, and we need that time and then be able to pass that on to the next council.
Thank you. Matt?
Okay, I already did 20 minutes on why I thought 24s is a better proposal, including the fact that it's the norm nationally, it's the norm on the statewide level, it provides stability, it provides continuity, it provides for long-term planning, it saves money in terms of elections, and it lets us focus on long-term goals as opposed to running for reelection. So I won't go into that too deeply. I also gave my reasons opposing this at the last four times we've had the opportunity to address it, so I will be brief and end at that point.
Thank you. Carl?
Where I had a problem with this, what's in the charter at this time that was drafted and authored by Dodger Arp is pretty much the last paragraph that, and I'll just read it right from the charter, "Service in a term of office that commenced prior to," this specific section, "prior to the effective date of any term limited, inactive, on a council member will be credited against them. Any term limitation approved by the Palm Beach Gardens electorate." The confusing part for that, other than what I had said before, that the ballot, that the petition language was not the language on the ballot, then it was argued in court because I was a part of it, I spent a lot of money defending term limits myself, and then it was another definition by four other judges at the Fourth DCA. "Service in a term of office that commenced prior to" is November 2014. None of us were here. My research on this, not being an attorney, is that this particular section does not affect any of us. So by addressing this hard topic, because if we're term-limited out in two years, then this won't get addressed until the next council comes around. So we're taking on the hard topic of trying to clean up the charter, because the charter does in fact say it needs to be reviewed, a charter review committee needs to commence every five years, so we took that on, and because there's so many different variations of this, it was on the charter review's radar to get back with us. If we don't do anything, then it looks like the way that it's assumed now, that us as a council or any person going forward can run two years, sit out for a month, two terms, and then run again. So we are addressing the hard, and I appreciate the negative comments towards me personally, but I think we are addressing this, and basically we're term-limiting ourselves out after a certain time, cleaning up this specific charter, and I've listened to, I did table the idea of triple threes with a lifetime ban. Well, with all the ground paving that are the ground pounding I've done, and honestly, the emails gave me a route to knock on doors, and those people were in favor of term limits, especially by the time we had lengthy discussions with them, but they didn't want me, as my vote, to take away their vote by putting an absolute lifetime ban, because then they don't have the chance to vote on that, and that's what they wanted. So I went with just what Mr. Dienerstein said, Mr. Deloie said in court, that it was never meant to be a lifetime ban. And I think I can do better with 3/3s. I don't agree with the revolving door. I would rather see a stronger city council as opposed to stronger city staff, so the council can help guide the staff based on citizens' input. And that's how I feel about it, and it seems like it's such a mess, so I agree with this one.
Thank you, Carl. Mark?
You know, regarding 3/3s versus 2/4s, the Charter Review Committee discussed that at length, not that I'm opposed to 2/4s, but logistically it was just going to be too complicated, so I'm happy with 3/3s. You know, I wanted to make a quick comment about districts, it seemed to come up again tonight. Palm Beach County has districts, and a lot of people don't like the fact that districts are in place, because if I'm only running in one particular area, then I'm not responsive to those that are not in my district. So I'm fully in favor of 27b to allow this to move forward and make it continuous, so thank you.
Thank you. We've all been talking to residents of the community, and we've heard some pluses, some minuses, we've heard people in favor of 2/4s, I've actually heard several that said they were in favor of 2/4s. However, I've heard more that were in favor of 3/3s. So that's how I am basing my decision. As for the ordinance 27a versus 27b, 27b clears up the protected class of people that could possibly sue us, because it's clearing up the language, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. So it also makes people who want to come back sit out an entire term, as opposed to, as Carl said, which in mine and Carl's instance would be one year, or Mark, Matthew, and Rochelle, they could just sit out two years and then run for the next open seat. As for districting, I believe Burt Primoroso, who served on council for 12 years, lived in, lives in an ungated community? Okay.
So did David Levy.
And so did David Levy. So as for, it's just people who want to run, people who want to give their time, that's who's sitting up here, and that's who's doing the work, and that's who's listening to the public. And the public, at the end of the day, come March, will be the people deciding what the fate is of the council, what the fate is of the charter, whether we have plurality or majority, it will be the voters. And I am sure that there will be a campaign, one way or the other, for people to come out and vote yes, and come out and vote no, but regardless, if they come out, their voices will be heard. So I will say that I am in favor of Ordinance 27b, and I would like to have a motion.
You have a motion.
I have one more thing. I'm sorry. Matthew?
Matthew?
Sure, go ahead, even though you had your 20 minutes, but that's okay.
Okay, I'll take two.
Okay.
Start the timer. Okay, first of all.
Start the timer.
First of all, yeah, I agree. I have tremendous respect for Mark, I think he's a leader, and I think he's very bright, and we do disagree on the issue. As far as 2/4s, it's not that complex, it's done all across the nation, across Florida. As far as putting things on the ballot, the electorate already voted, we're just kind of saying we're going to do something different. And as far as the 2/4s finally, the Charter Review, three of the people said that they wanted 3/3s, two of the people said they wanted 2/2s. So I mean, if you're really giving somebody a choice, the choice would be keep it the same, 3/3s or 2/4s, but that being said, I am done.
Okay. All right, so we've had a motion, a second, a discussion, are we now at the point where we may take a vote? Okay. All those in favor of Ordinance 27b at this time, please vote yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Motion carries. Now we are on to Ordinance 28. May I have the clerk read the title, please?
Ordinance 28, 2017, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopted in accordance with Sections 101.161 and 166.031 Florida statutes, calling for a referendum to be held on March 13, 2018, proposing to the electorate of the city that the city charter be amended at Section 4-1, to provide that any council member who has left office due to term limits may not be elected again for a period of three years, providing that the remainder of the charter, as may be amended by the electorate, shall remain in full force and effect as previously enacted, providing for submission of the proposed ballot language to the electors of the city, setting forth the form of the question to be voted upon at such election, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. Has anything changed since the first reading?
Just the, again, the rephrasing of the ballot question as discussed at the workshop, so that it's simplified and refers to the title of the question.
And would you please read that for us?
Yes, ma'am, and also at the recommendation that we had at first reading, I made the change on the fly. So what it says is, "City of Palm Beach Gardens referendum, question number three, the current char," and then the summary reads as follows, "The current charter does not specify the minimum time that a term-limited council member must be out of office before running for council again. Shall the Palm Beach Gardens charter be amended to establish that term-limited council members must be out of office for three years prior to being reelected, such that they may not run for city council again until the second regularly scheduled city municipal election following that member leaving office?" And then the question is, "Shall the above-described question number three be adopted, yes or no?" And just so, for clarification, the reason that it says they may not run for council again until the second regularly scheduled city municipal election is because we have a bye year. We have an election two years in a row, and then we don't have an election. And you don't take office until the, until the first meeting following your election in March, so that March election doesn't count as the first election after having left office. And so I wanted it to be as clear as possible, so people understood that it was, they would actually be running for office in that third year, but they wouldn't take office until they had reached the third year.
Thank you. I have no cards on Ordinance 28, so I'll close the hearing. May I get a motion and a second, please?
I'll make a motion supporting Ordinance 28, a discussion of.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. So I'll bring it back for discussion. Rochelle? Matthew? Remember, you only have like two minutes.
No, no, that was the last one. This one actually has some thoughts on, new thoughts. I have trouble with the ballot language. What we're doing here is... What we're doing here is, before it says, the charter says, "No individual shall be elected to the office of council member for more than two full consecutive terms." What we're, right, what we're doing is, is we're changing that. What we're doing is, we're saying, "You can serve two terms, sit out one, and come back." And I think that it needs to be clear what we're doing. And just to make it, just to make it clearer what we're doing, instead of just describing what the charter says, I think that we should actually use the language of the charter. It turns out that if you use the language of the charter, it's two words shorter than this description, which is confusing. So I would propose that it say, "The current charter states, 'No individual shall be elected to the office of council member for more than two consecutive full terms,'" and then you would leave the rest of the language in. I'm against it, no matter how you do it, but I think that if you're going to put it on the ballot, at least people ought to know what they're voting on, so that there's not confusion in the language.
Thank you. And Mark or Carl, I mean, and Matthew, what you did said was actually against what we already voted on, which was the three threes. You said the two threes, so just one.
Just so that you're clear, so that you understand it.
Oh, I understand.
What I'm saying, well, no, but what I'm saying is, on this ordinance, even if it's the three threes, you would change, well, first of all, we're saying what the current charter says. Legally, you have to say that. And what you need to do is, you need to accurately characterize what the charter says. And this language describing it will call it confusing. Instead of saying, giving a summary, we should clearly say, "This is what you're being asked to do." You're saying before, "An individual shall be elected to a certain number of terms." You should make it clear.
Maria, what I believe Councilmember Lane is leaving out is the statement that is in the charter that says that it...
I'm not even talking.
Oh, I thought you were finished. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you, I'm sorry, I thought you were finished.
What I'm saying is, is the charter says, and I'm quoting it, "No individual shall be elected to the office of council member for more than two consecutive full terms." So when we talk about what the current charter says, we need to accurately characterize what it says. Otherwise, it could be confusing to the voter when it says, "The current charter does not specify the minimum time that a term-limited council member must be out of office before running for council again." It actually does say that you get two terms and you're out, and the Fourth District Court of Appeal, which is comprised of three judges, says that it needs to be, that that's what the charter says. You get two chances, and you're done. That's what the Court of Appeal says. So it really doesn't need much, but I just think that this needs to be clearer, so that go up, go down, at least we know what we're voting on, so that it's clear.
Thank you. Rochelle?
What is being left out is that it does say in the charter that they, "Service in a term of office which commenced prior to the effective date of any term will be credited against the Palm Beach Gardens electorate." So "prior to" does not include us, and it sets us up for an equal protection challenge in the future by creating two distinct groups of people. That has to be identified, and that's why it can't just say two or three terms, and you're done, because it doesn't include us.
Respectfully, I think that, in terms of an equal protection analysis, if you look at it, when it was passed, it said, "No individual shall be elected to the office of council member for more than two consecutive full terms." And then there's additional language, which indicated that people who'd previously been on council were prohibited, and that this included them. That's number one. Number two is, if you look at the effective date, from that date forward, "No individual shall be elected to the office of council member for more than two consecutive full-year terms." That is a forward-looking approach. So there is no, there is no equal protection problem here. It applies to both. They passed it, it applies to us, and it would apply, and they also put language in to make sure that it applied to people who were elected prior to that time. That was certainly a major concern. So, and it was something that might not have been thought of, so they made sure that they put it in.
Okay, we've had both sides of this one. Mark or Carl, any comments?
No comment.
Thank you.
Matt, I appreciate you letting me know how many people are on the Fourth DCA. I'm still going to defer with the community input on this. We went, oh, I mean, dear Lord, we have beat this term limit. It's probably going to be the hardest thing we're ever going to do, is this issue. But at the, we clarified this at the last meeting, and I think it should, if there was questions at the last meeting, when, under the direction of Councilmember Marciano, when we all agreed to redirect Mr. Lowman to clarify this specific issue, I think, once we, we had the language at the last meeting, that would have been the time to then question that. And now we've been campaigning it, we've been listening to it, and we've been doing all these things, so now we're, now one of us is questioning it again. So, and as far as the charter, and I appreciate Mr. Lane's interpretation of how he feels it reads, but why would it be in there, why would it, why would Mr. Dodger, or, put it in there, "Commenced prior to the effective date"? Why does "prior to" have to be in there at all? So "prior to" the effective date, which is November 2014, and I don't want to debate with Mark or Matt on this, because I appreciate his site, I'm just looking at it different as a non-lawyer, and with community input. So I'm going to leave it alone and, and push forward on it, so we can finally get it off our plate and go back to serving the community.
Super, I'll just briefly answer that.
I wasn't asking for an answer, Matt.
Well, but, since my name was mentioned, what they were doing is, is they were doing a clawback to make sure that it covered people who were in office prior to the date that it went into effect. I tell you, as I read the proposed ballot language of all of these proposals, as I read the proposed ballot language of all of these proposals, I think that they're legally deficient. I think they're going to be struck down by the first court that has an opportunity to review them. And I think that, once again, our residents are going to be stuck with the cost of paying our city attorney thousands of dollars to lose another case on term limits.
Okay. At this time, I think we've had plenty of discussion, and I just want to comment, because I haven't been doing a whole lot of commenting this evening. People voted for term limits. We're not getting rid of term limits. They, no, we're not getting rid of term limits. And what I heard from those people that voted for term limits, a lot of them said, "They were never given a choice as to the terms that they wanted. The only thing on the ballot was two, three-year terms." They were not given a choice of three, three-year terms, two, four-year terms. They weren't. There was just two, three-year terms. And as we all know, that when term limits are on the ballot, they pass. So all we are doing is giving the voters an opportunity to decide whether they want two, three-year terms, or three, three-year terms, whether they want council members to never come back, or sit out, actually, that's off the table, whether they can come back after three years. So that's what we're voting on this evening, and I believe we are now going to take a vote. So may I have, all those in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Vote carries four to one. Okay. Moving on to ordinance 29. May I have the clerk read the title, please?
Yes, ma'am. Ordinance 29, 2017, an ordinance to the City Council, the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopted in accordance with Sections 101.161 and 166.031 Florida statutes, calling for a referendum to be held on March 13, 2018, proposing to the electorate of the city that the city charter be amended at Section 4-1, to provide that council members shall be elected by plurality rather than by majority, providing that the remainder of the charter, as may be amended by the electorate, shall remain in full force and effect as previously enacted, providing for submission of the proposed ballot question to the electors of the city, setting forth the form of the question to be voted upon at such election, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. Thank you. I will open the hearing. And has anything changed since the first reading?
Again, just as discussed at the workshop, the ballot question itself is simplified. If you'd like, I'll read, I'm happy to read it, the ballot. Title of the question is, "City of Palm Beach Gardens referendum, question number four," says, "Shall the Palm Beach Gardens charter be amended to change the method of election from majority vote to plurality vote, such that the city council candidate who receives the highest number of votes for a particular council seat shall be deemed to be elected?" And the question is, "Shall the above-described question number four be adopted, yes or no?"
Thank you. I have one card on this. Mr. David Parks?
David Parks, 11648 Ficus Street. Seventy percent of Florida cities that are equal or greater in population to Palm Beach Gardens use majority-plus-one wins or have runoffs. Why are we changing? Has anyone placed in the public record at any time in this process a survey of citizens that says there's a public outcry for this ordinance? Ordinance 29 says polarity wins. It should be called the Incumbent Protection Act. If you take this council, you've collectively raised at least 212,000 in campaign contributions for your seats. In total, all the candidates running raised just shy of a half a million dollars, placing $100,000 value for each of your seats. And you want us to fret about saving the taxpayers $70,000? What else do you got? It's an insult to the electorate to have a sitting mayor lecture us about democracy while simultaneously working to chip away at it. What you're really doing by cowardly hiding behind the charter process is scheming to protect the investments of your campaign contributors and your own seats against potential outsiders. I have to disagree, Mark. How much integrity and how fair do you think the citizens think this charter process has been, when they learn that one of its members wasn't a resident of the city, but when he votes on the same issue on the North Palm side of the intercoastal, majority rules? But when earning his paycheck and lobbying here in the gardens, he's all in for polarity. Investors are warned that past performance doesn't equal future outcomes. This council should heed the same advice before surrendering the rights to future unknowns and reject this ordinance. Charters are not about the past, but about the future. No one has a crystal ball, but the small group of players manipulating this charter process certainly have political calculators. Champions of this ordinance point to low voter turnout data. What you're actually observing is more likely discouraged voters. Voters figure out that with our at-large voting, which allows 80% of this council to live within the walking yardage of the champion golf course, they're done. By design, we really have a subpar democracy in the signature city. But as the city grows within the next decade to 70,000 citizens and new politically ambitious characters surface, the current political cabal is threatened. They need a plan, because in the future race, we could see candidates throwing their support behind one another in a runoff, if we still have majority. Polarity, on the other hand, allows an incumbent under fire to retain office with just 21% of the vote in a five-person race. In my October 30 letter to this council, I propose that you consider Wellington's 35% threshold, but alternatives have never been discussed by this council or the Charter Review Committee. Seventy percent of Florida cities that are equal or greater in population to Gardens use majority wins. We certainly aren't changing, because it's the right or the courageous thing to do. Please reject this ordinance tonight and preserve the integrity of our election process.
I'll close the hearing at this time. May I get a motion and a second, please?
I'll make a motion to accept discussion on ordinance 29.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. I will bring it back for discussion. Any discussion? Rochelle, anything?
Is it motion for discussion or approval?
No, a motion for approval. I'm sorry, Mark, restate your motion for approval, please.
I'll make a motion for approval of ordinance 29.
Okay.
And I'll second that motion.
Thank you. I will bring it back for discussion. Anybody?
If possible, could the city clerk, what, could the city clerk please go through exactly what the supervisor charges for running an election, and what the costs are and have been in the, in the past?
Yes, ma'am. In the 2017 election, in the municipal election, the amount paid to the SOE as per agreement was $52,186. In the runoff election, it was an additional $41,963, for a total of $94,139. The additional costs include poll worker pay, for a total with the municipal and the runoff, for $59,478. Polling location rentals, we have about six locations that charge us for using their facility for $1,150. Voting equipment, delivery, and pickup for both the municipal and the runoff was $6,208. The cost for ballots was $8,734. The advertising was $21,000 for both the municipal and the runoff. We use global translation, because by law, we have to advertise in both English and Spanish. That was $361. So for the total, with, without the advertising, because we use a different line item, was $170,375. With the advertising, it would have been $191,375.
Thank you. Any other questions? Comments?
I wasn't going to comment, but since my name was brought up in question, I'd just like to respond very briefly. I think that the Charter Review Committee was very well-run. We had five people, two people that, yes, do business in the city. We have one person who's on the Charter Review Committee in the past, part of the NCNC. And we had two people that hardly ever show up. I don't even know if I would ever even recognize one of the members that was on our charter committee. He'd never been here before, which is great. You had five people from different backgrounds that came to serve on a committee to make the city better. And that's kind of what you want. And we had a third-party moderator, by the way, that came from another part of the state who has an expertise in charter reviews. So can we continue to review and ask every single question from every single resident, every single day, for the next 10 years, to try to make the charter perfect? Yeah, maybe. But I'm very comfortable with the way the Charter Review Committee was developed, the way they handled themselves. We got a lot of compliments throughout the process, and as a result, I am happy with what they did and the work they did.
Thank you. Do I have any other comments? Seeing none, I will go ahead and, since we have no further discussion, all those in favor of passing ordinance 29?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. And now we are on to ordinance 30, 2017. May I have the clerk read the title, please?
Ordinance 30, 2017, an ordinance to the City Council, the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopting a small-scale amendment to its comprehensive plan, future land use map, in accordance with the mandate set forth in Chapter 163 Florida statutes, specifically Section 163.3184 at Secuencias Florida statutes pursuant to application number CPSS-17-10-000007, that provides for an amendment to the city's future land use map by designating one parcel of real property comprising approximately 2.07 acres in size, more or less, as I industrial, such parcel being located generally at the southwest corner of Burns Road and Ironwood Road, providing for compliance with all requirements of Chapter 163 Florida statutes, providing for transmission to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, DEO, providing that the future land use map of the City of Palm Beach Gardens be amended accordingly, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. I'll open the hearing. Has anything changed since the first reading?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Peter Hoffmann's again, planning manager here for the City of Palm Beach Gardens. There have been no changes since first reading on ordinance 30 and 31. Resolution 5 is a companion item to ordinance 31, which will be the actual development order with the site plan for the city's fleet property. Staff does have a combined presentation for all three items, if it's the pleasure of the council to have a presentation.
I'm, I'm good, because this is the second reading. I'm good, because this is the second reading. Nothing's changed since the first, but anyone else on council need more information?
I'm good.
Okay. No, I believe we're good.
It will require individual actions on each item.
Correct. All right, so I will close the hearing. May I get a motion and a second to approve, please?
Madam Mayor, I'll motion to approve ordinance 30, 2017 on second reading.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Okay, so the companion to that will be ordinance 31. And Patty, are you going to read 31 and five together?
Yes, ma'am. Ordinance 31, 2017. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, rezoning certain real property within the corporate limits of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, consisting of one parcel of real property totaling 2.07 acres in size, more or less, and located on the southwest corner of the intersection of Burns Road and Ironwood Road, providing that this parcel of real property, which is more particularly described herein, shall be assigned the city zoning designation of Plan Unit Development, PUD, overlay, with an underlying zoning designation of light industrial, M1A, providing that the zoning map of the City of Palm Beach Gardens be amended accordingly, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes. Resolution 5, 2018, is a companion item to ordinance 31, 2017, and will require council action. Resolution 5, 2018, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a Plan Unit Development, PUD, located on the southwest corner of Burns Road and Ironwood Road, as more particularly described herein, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. So I will open the hearing. And any expertises? And has anything changed since the first reading?
Again, Madam Mayor, council members, nothing has changed since the first reading. Martin Fitz does have a prepared presentation for the benefit of the public. Should it be the pleasure of the council?
I have no cards, and I think we've heard this presentation, so I'm good with it, but does anyone else need? Okay. All right, may I get a motion? And I'm doing these separately, correct, Patty? We're just doing ordinance 31 at this time, right?
Yes.
Okay. So I have, may I have a motion and a second to approve, please?
I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 31.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I'll bring it back for discussion. Hearing none? All in favor? Aye? Motion carries five zero. And I will open the hearing for resolution 5. The clerk has already read the title. We have no expertises, and nothing has changed. I don't believe we need a presentation. I have no cards. I'll close the hearing. May I get a motion and a second to approve, please?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve resolution 5, 2018.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Bring it back for discussion. Hearing none? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you very much. Okay. Next. Ordinance 1, 2018, amending the City of Palm Beach Gardens budget.
Ordinance 1, 2018. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending the City of Palm Beach Gardens budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2017, and ending September 30, 2018 inclusive, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. I will open the hearing. Staff has a presentation? Hi, Alan.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Alan Owens, Finance Administrator, for the record. Ordinance 1, 2018, our budget amendments. Purpose of these amendments, which we do every year at this time of year, is threefold. The first area that we're amending the budget is we're re-appropriating balances on purchase orders that were encumbered at the end of last fiscal year, and also balances on uncompleted projects. So we're carrying forward the related budget amounts from 2017 into the current fiscal year. Also, at this time of year, we always adjust our beginning budgeted fund balance to equal what our final end-of-year budget, end-of-year actual balances were. And we have a couple of the recommended adjustments that we'll talk about at the very end of the presentation. But first, I just wanted to stress, again, that this is all part of what we do as far as the budgeting, accounting, financial reporting cycle, of course, which starts every year with the adoption of the budget, which obviously has been done. The next step is we work on closing out the fiscal year. We've completed that process. Once we do the closeout, we've paid all the vendors, all the invoices have been, where we can then identify the PO amounts and the projects that we're carrying forward, which is part of this budget amendment. And also, the other part is then adjusting the fund balances. The next step that we go into is the preparation of the comprehensive annual financial report and working with our external auditors. And our auditors will be in in a couple of weeks, January 16th, so we're well on the way in that part of the process. And then from there, it goes into, throughout the year, we monitor the budget, and that includes preparation of our quarterly financial reports. And then we start the process all over again for next year's budget. As far as the carryforward of the projects and POs, this is a requirement under generally accepted government accounting policies whereby we have to carry forward funds that have been obligated to match the timing of the expenditure that cross into the new fiscal year. As far as the total, a quick summary of the total amount, $47 million of projects and purchase orders being carried over from fiscal year 17 into fiscal year 18. We had a total number of open projects of 53 that were being carried over from FY17 into FY18. Just a point of information, we had the 53 projects being carried over. We've also opened up seven new projects in the current fiscal year. So staff is currently in the process of monitoring a total of 60, 60 total capital improvement projects. The next few slides just gives everybody an idea, just summary of some of the most significant projects that are being re-appropriated from prior year into the current year. District Park expansion, very well aware of that, I'm sure, the $11.2 million project. We have the Tennis Center Clubhouse project, $3.5 million. The Operations Center, $6.6 million total. You can see a rendering there and the location where that property, that building will go. We also have the Golf Course Cart Barn Replacement and Maintenance Building for a total of $1.8 million. You can see the location of where that will go on the site plan there. The Golf Clubhouse, total of $2.3 million, that's being re-appropriated from last year. You can see some nice pictures there of the status of that project, very near completion of that project. We have the City Hall Expansion Project of $6.9 million, and you can see a couple of renderings here. That project is very near the end of the design phase, so these are renderings that are going, you'll see some final renderings that'll be slightly different, but it's coming along nicely. The Baseball Complex Expansion, $2.5 million. You can see the location of where that project, those improvements will be. The Police Department Expansion Project of a little over $2 million. You can see some preliminary drawings and location of where that project is. The Golf Course Parking Improvements, a total of $1.1 million. You can see the location there in relation to the new clubhouse. And its work is actually starting to be able to progress now that things have been drying up out there. This is not a capital project, but a significant open encumbrance that we had at the end of last year related to Hurricane Irma cleanup and debris recovery costs, total $1,450,000. Shady Lakes Drive Phase Two, $965,000. Johnson Dairy Improvement, $778,000.
We would like to see that get done. Exactly.
And the Richard Road Public Safety Training Site for a total of $735,000. The Golf Training Center, a total of $635,000, and a couple of nice pictures there, and you can see the location again on the site plan. And that brings us to the next major area, where we adjust our fund balances to the actual ending fund balances from the prior year. And we do this every year to make sure that our total budgeted expenditures and reserves do not exceed what our actual available sources, which are revenues and also our balances carried forward. We don't want, we have to by law make sure that we are in balance, so it's typical good budgeting practice to adjust your balances to the actual ending balances. Most significant fund balance adjustment we had related to the General Fund and the Budget Stabilization Reserve Fund. Our beginning budgeted balance was $2.5 million. When we closed the books, we had a net positive adjustment of $1.2 million. That would bring the account to $3.7 million. Just a little brief background about the budget stabilization account. This was created in 2011 when we refinanced Series 2003 bonds. At the time, we had a requirement, we had $2.4 million that had to be set aside as a debt service reserve fund. When we refinanced those bonds, that was the year that we attained the AAA rating, and so they said, okay, you don't have to keep that money set aside restricted. So rather than just put that money back into our general fund reserves, we set it aside in this Budget Stabilization Fund whereby each year, through the efforts of all departments, as they manage their budgets, again, you can't predict, guarantee future results, but we've been very good as far as the departments managing their budgets and conservative revenue estimates, so that our history has been that that account has stayed right around the $2 million balance, within that range since the account was created. So with this positive adjustment, it gives us the opportunity to look at a couple of items here, which I'll go over. We have three recommended adjustments or transfers out of the fund. And the first one deals with the Tennis Center Project. As you saw on the earlier slide, the total projected cost is $3.5 million. The intent was to pay for the construction of that project with the sale of the Public Works Facility, which had been anticipated to be close to $3 million. The appraisal is around $2.2 million. We hope to get more than that, but to be conservative, this budget amendment reflects anticipated proceeds of $2.2 million. So with that, we have a total of $1.3 million of required additional funding. We are requesting to transfer that $1.3 million out of the Budget Stabilization Fund. The next two items have to do with generators. The first one here, City Hall and Police Generators, total of $425,000. During Hurricane Irma, we had the, what happened was the City Hall generator failed. Now, that generator provides service, backup service, not only to City Hall, but also to the Police Department, which does not have its own separate standalone generator. It's not tied into the EOC. So what we had was, City Hall was down, and then also the Police Department. So we're recommending to, two things. First of all, we have to replace the City Hall generator because it failed, also because with the expansion of City Hall, we really need to upsize this generator. That's the first step. And then the second would be to acquire a dedicated generator just for the Police Department. And again, the benefit from this, these purchases, they would both act as additional layers of redundancy or backup to the EOC. Again, that totals $425,000. The last item requested has to do with generator at the golf course. Since the hurricane prices have just, have been going up, and so to fully fund the golf course generator installation, we're requesting a total of $124,000 to be transferred out of the Budget Stabilization. For a total requested transfer is a $1,849. Now, with councils, if council approves, you can see what this chart shows as a summary of what the Budget Stabilization Fund would be, starting at $3,650,000, less the allocations. So the balance would still be $1.8 million. Again, this still, this balance, if you plug it into our five-year projections and forecasts, we still have an adequate balance through our five-year projection period. The other item to point out as far as reserves and the General Fund, our unassigned reserves remain untouched at $23.1 million, and that totals 27.8% of our 2017 expenditures, so we're still, we meet our policy goal then there as far as a minimum percentage. And staff recommends approval of ordinance 1, 2018. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I will close the hearing, because I have no cards. May I bring this back for a motion and a second to approve, please?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance 1, 2018.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you. I will bring it back for discussion. Any questions or comments?
I'd just like to thank Alan for including in his presentation all the questions I brushed him with at the meeting this morning over the significance of the stabilization fund and the need for the extra spending on the clubhouse and the generators, and so I think it was all in there.
Matthew?
We covered it in depth at my agenda review.
Thank you. Carl?
No, I don't have any questions. I just...
Comments?
No, Alan, I appreciate you going, because I was concerned about the reserve being touched at all, so we spent some time on that, and I think you educated me. So we have a formula in place to make sure that if this double exemption comes up in November, which probably will pass, that we can still protect the community by having, being able to absorb with that money that will remain there, correct?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
All right, that's all I had. Thank you, sir.
Mark?
No, these are, these are things that we've seen every year, for as long as I've been observing the city's budget, so I have no questions.
Alan, I just, again, want to say thank you. You all have heard me say that I've read all the budgets from the rest of the cities, and I am continually amazed at how good a job you do on the budget, and I am so glad that we are actually, we have carryovers and that we have a budget stabilization and that we have reserves and that we are in the envious position of having those things. I did, and you heard me ask this at Agenda Review, you know, we talked about how Irma might impact our reserves this year, and it turns out because we have budgeted so well, we just had money in the General Fund to cover that, because who knows when we're going to get those dollars back from FEMA. And my question, and it's a question that I've asked several times, is, yes, we have $23 million in our reserves, but we have no formula for those reserves to go up, and as our budget increases, the percentage of that reserve will always start to go down. So that's just, you know, looking forward, something that I pay attention to, so. But again, thank you, because it's a great presentation and very concise.
Thank you.
So having said all that, any further discussion? Okay. Thank you. So may I have, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero. Thank you. All right, next on our agenda. Ordinance three. Patty, would you read the title, please?
Ordinance three, 2018. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving an update to its comprehensive plan in accordance with the mandate set forth in Section 163.3177 Florida statutes pursuant to a city-initiated update that provides for the annual update to the five-year capital improvement schedule within the capital improvements element, providing that the data as amended or revised shall be substituted for and replace the existing data in the capital improvements element, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. I will open the hearing. Any expertises on this, other than our agenda review? No? And staff, presentation, please. Hello?
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor. We do have a presentation prepared. This is simply a housekeeping item that's required by state statutes for us to annually update our capital improvements element with our capital improvements from the budget that relate to level of service and maintaining those levels of services for public facilities, water, wastewater, and then updating Table 9B, which is, which we received from the school board. So we're happy to give a presentation if it's at the pleasure of the council.
I was happy with the presentation you gave at my agenda review. Does anyone need a presentation?
I have no further questions.
I think it was covered well in our agenda package also, so thank you. So I will close the hearing, and I will entertain a motion and a second to approve, please.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number three.
A second.
Thank you. I will bring it back for discussion. Hearing none? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Okay. You okay? All right. Would you please read Resolution three?
Resolution three, 2018. A resolution in the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Resolution 18, 2017, to modify conditions of approval, number seven, related to the timing of construction of their perimeter wall, to modify the perimeter... to the timing of construction of their perimeter wall, to modify the perimeter wall, perimeter wall buffer cross-sections, and landscape plans accordingly for the Artistry Neighborhood Parcel G of the Alton Plan Community Development, PCD, generally located north of Hood Road, south of Donald Ross Road, east of the Florida's Turnpike, and west of Interstate 95, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you. I will open the hearing.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Donaldson hearing here on behalf of the applicant, K. H. Alton. Before I start my presentation, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
And just on behalf of the PGA Quarter Association, wanted to remind you that we have our annual economic forecast next Wednesday. That's January 10th, starts 7:30. I think we've got a sold-out room, and we certainly welcome and look forward to you being there. I think it's close to our 20th Annual, but I don't remember the exact one, but it's on your invitation, so we look forward to seeing you all there. Some great news, I'm sure we'll hear from Mr. Fishkein. So again, our project team is here. Mr. Morton with Colter is here today. Kate DeWitt, who's been the project planner on this project, is also here with us tonight. Tonight, we're specifically here talking about Parcel G, a minor modification to one of the conditions of approval for Parcel G. Parcel G is that portion of Alton that's located west of the Florida's Turnpike. It's approved for 469 single-family homes. You approved it last year, and we're pleased to tell you that we're actively making progress out in the field, clearing and getting our Models Center under construction that we, we certainly won't be opening this year, but certainly, hopefully sometime in the summer, the models will be near completion, and next season, the models will be open for the marketplace. Certainly something we're very, very excited about. Just turn the site a little bit to the north. Again, this is an enlargement of Parcel G with the 469 homes, the surrounding areas. We're requesting a modification to Condition Number 7 of Resolution 18, 2017, and it relates to the timing of construction of the perimeter buffer wall, as well as some minor amendments to the cross-section and the location of a couple of the segments of those walls, which I will review with you. This is the condition as we propose to modify it as currently stated. The condition basically states that prior to the issuance of the first CO, excluding the models, that the applicant shall construct the perimeter wall and complete it along with the associated perimeter landscaping. And so we're asking for that to be modified. It's, it's an extensive endeavor, not only from a permitting perspective, but from a construction perspective. And so we're asking that to be modified. Instead of being required to complete that wall, that we'd be required to submit a permit and to begin the construction of the wall prior to the first CO, but not have an obligation to have it completed until our 50th Certificate of Occupancy is complete. And I'll show you in a phasing plan that the homes related to those first 50 homes, actually first 100 homes, are well away from where the wall will be constructed.
Before you do that, just make sure you were sworn in, correct?
And I was sworn in.
I forgot to ask you earlier. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So the buffer wall is an improvement that will be implemented by Northern Palm Beach County Improvement District. It is a part of their plan of improvement. They have actually applied and obtained the permits from the Department of Transportation, and now they're working through their own permitting process. They've got a very regimented process that they're moving forward with finalizing the design, and then we'll go to bidding and then construction, as well as the permits needed here from the city. And so the condition we're requesting to move it, move the requirement to complete the wall to the 50th CO, which seems very, very reasonable and logical. So again, this is the, the site. There it is highlighted in yellow. The area that's highlighted in red along I-95 is where the buffer wall is proposed to be constructed along Interstate 95, as well as along the Turnpike frontage. And this matter went before your Planning and Zoning Board a month and a half ago, and there were a few concerns that were represented, and we had a split vote. And that was primarily because of the fact that they didn't have all the information that they wanted at hand. And they wanted us to go out and to look at any, any potential impacts from headlights related to I-95, particularly, in fact, specifically related to I-95, and then to provide some information on noise. And so while your staff strongly recommended approval of the, of the application, we decided to take a step back and do some additional research and work with your staff, and we've done that, and that's what this particular exhibit shows. So the areas that we're modifying the, the walls are at the extreme corner up here toward Donald Ross Road, and it's an area where we have really our highest quality preserve. And one of the, one of the primary benefits of eliminating this segment of wall is we're able to provide connectivity to the preserve that's located along the Turnpike. This is property that's owned by the state as a part of the Florida's Turnpike that's open, good quality habitat. We'd be bifurcating that with the wall so the critters could move back and forth. And of course, it's well away from any of our, our development area, and it's very aesthetically nice to look at as you're driving by. The second area of wall to be modified is in the extreme southwest corner. We have a 20-acre preserve there, again, very, very high quality, with no homes in that area. And it was determined that really the, the existing vegetation is far more aesthetically pleasing than looking at a wall. The walls do have some benefit, and we are proposing to, to landscape them. So those are the two areas of wall. Phase 1 is highlighted in the southeast quadrant of the site. We have about 100 homes there. The Model Center is actually in the extreme corner, and that's just our model. So any of the homes that would be receiving Certificate of Occupancy prior to, to the completion of that wall are well interior to the project and would really not be impacted at all. We did conduct an analysis per the recommendation of the, of the Planning and Zoning Board to look at headlights, looking at them from the on-ramp, looking at them from the sightline angles, looking at them from the Turnpike. We even did an evening drone analysis, which concluded really undisputably that there's zero impact from, from any headlights that are there. Then we took the, did, did a couple of other things, is that we extended the walls a little bit further than what we had presented to the Planning and Zoning Board, so that we'd have particularly on the north end, which was the only area that there was any concern at all, we extended the walls to a minimum of 300 feet or a football from our northernmost home, so there'd be at least 300 feet of vegetation or more to the edge of the Interstate 95. And we went further than that and went out and really tried to look at what was the benefit or lack of benefit of that vegetation as it related to noise. And so this was very interesting. So we, we did the study under the direction of Ed Dugger, who is a noise consultant, had basically told us what app to do and gave us some protocols, and we went out there and did it. And just for your information, it, it did what we thought it was going to do. It predicted, we first did a noise level at, at I-95 on what we call the main line. So that's where all the cars are riding, not just the, the on-ramp. And we had a decibel level of 72 decibels. On the on-ramp itself, down in this area, as we get closer to the project, that dropped, as you would expect it, less cars on the on-ramp, maybe a little further away, to 70 decibels. And then as we moved 100 feet in to the vegetation, this very dense native vegetation, it dropped to 46 decibels. And so you want to, what, what does that mean? Well, a normal conversation is about 60 to 65 decibels, and a quiet office is 50 decibels. And so at 100 feet in, and of course, these lots are 300 feet in, we, we drop a very appreciable drop in decibels. And so it's a logarithmic drop, so it's, as it, as it closed. And oddly enough, just for anecdotal information, we went and actually took some readings behind some of the DOT walls that were built, where there was no vegetation, but we went 100 feet back, and actually, the sound levels there are 52 decibels. So basically, the vegetation does better than what the walls do. So for, for whatever, but these walls were actually proposed for visual buffer, not necessarily for sound buffer. So that's, that's our presentation. We thank you for your support, and we're in agreement with staff's recommendation. Appreciate all their hard work, and sorry for such a lengthy presentation. I know it's late tonight. Thank you very much.
It is the first meeting of the year, so it's always a long one. Thank you. And staff, any additions?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Staff does have a brief presentation, just would like to highlight a few things. The applicant's presentation was thorough, and we do appreciate Mr. Herring's time.
Good evening. My name is Erin Kelly. I'm a senior planner with the Planning and Zoning Department with the City of Palm Beach Gardens. I just wanted to clarify a couple things. The applicant was very thorough in his presentation. I do want to clarify that the, the Planning and Zoning Board had a split vote of 3-3. Staff felt comfortable originally, and with the additional analysis and working with the applicant, we still do feel comfortable supporting this petition. In addition to that, I wanted to bring up the fact that, that an environmental assessment was completed and approved with the, with Resolution 74, 2016, and this environmental assessment depicts the preserve areas, specifically in the areas where the wall is proposed to be modified and the locations of the wall modified, high-quality pine flatwoods, upland scrub, pine, and hardwoods do exist. So along with the noise analysis that was provided, you can see here in the environmental assessment that we have very high-quality preserve areas, which will, which will give some visual buffer and some, and some noise mitigation as well. So that's really some of the main things that I wanted to, on staff's behalf, relate to. The council and staff is recommending approval of Resolution 3, 2018, as presented. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I have been sworn in.
Thank you very much. And I have no cards on this, so I will close the hearing. May I get a motion in a second to approve, please?
I move that we approve Resolution Number 3, 2018.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And I will bring it back for discussion, and I'm sure we have some questions. Michelle, anything?
The last slide. The last slide you said, you showed on the P and Z split, their concerns were the noise and the headlights, and that was addressed in the studies that were shown. Okay.
That is correct. The staff was recommending approval at the Planning, Zoning, and Appeals Board meeting, continues to recommend approval. At the time of the meeting, the applicant did not have some graphics that were able to show the trajectory of the headlights. Staff was comfortable originally with the geometry that the cars would be traveling, but the additional graphics certainly helped drive that point home.
Thank you. Matthew?
I too want to commend Mr. Herring for his presentation. It was thorough and comprehensive, which is to be expected, as Mr. Herring's one of the most brilliant and exceptional land planners in the area.
Carl, anything? Any comments or questions?
No, I, I just appreciate we're moving, we're shortening one wall to actually enhance the preserve area, because I had, during the process, I had questioned the wall and the nature and the preserve. So we're actually enlarging that one particular area, and Pete, I questioned you on it, and I was looking at something different, and you clarified it for me. So the preserve area in the gardens, you know, we have 50-something percent, so I want to make sure that we stay on, on course with not, you know, lessening our preserve area, and with that, you actually combined state and city property to one. So I appreciate you guys protecting the animals and so on. Thank you.
Mark?
No, I, I agree that vegetation is a much better sound buffer than, than a wall. And also, I did speak with one of the members of the PZAB Board, Mark Cohn, who's also on the Northern, and he gave me his perspective on, on the vote, and I feel 100% comfortable with the recommendation from staff.
It's funny that you brought Mark's name up, because this is also conditional on Northern Palm Beach County Improvement District and their ability to build a wall in a timely manner. So that was actually one of the questions that came up today in my Agenda Review. And looking at the homes that are going in and where they're going in, I mean, I feel comfortable, it's what, less, about 10% of the homes? That would be, you know, something that, that won't affect them. And what was also interesting was the wall was not a requirement of the city. So I think we're doing a, a good job of making this piece of property for the residents something quiet and habitable and enjoyable, which our goal here is quiet enjoyment in the city when you buy a house. So I am in favor, and I don't see any further discussion, so at this moment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. You're welcome. Okay. Resolution 6. May I have the clerk read the title, please?
Resolution 6, 2018, A Resolution in the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving an exclusive franchise agreement with Waste Management Incorporated of Florida for solid waste recycling and vegetative waste collection services, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you. I will open the hearing. And staff has a presentation?
That is correct. Good evening again, City Council. Kumro, President and Contracts Director.
Have you been sworn in? I'm not going to forget now.
It's not a public...
This is not quasi-judicial.
There you go. Didn't need it. I'm learning. It's a, you know, it's a big learning curve, being mayor, you know, when you're only on council for a year, so.
Okay.
And you're doing great.
Thank you.
If I may, the purpose of the exclusive franchise agreement with Waste Management is for the collection of solid waste, residential and commercial solid waste, including recycling services. The original agreement we have, the current agreement, was executed in February 2006. It'll expire in March of 2018, which is just two more months. And we don't have any options on the contract renewed, so we have to go back out so we can get a new contract to maintain continuity of services. When we, when we were drafting the request of proposals, one of the things we considered was the projected growth of the city over the next 10 years in terms of residential and commercial development, so that the proposers who proposed on this solicitation could take that into consideration in terms of what they would project as the value, the overall value for this contract. We began the procurement timeline in June of 2017, which seems a long time ago. We advertised the request of proposals, we had a pre-proposal conference, we got five proposals, and there were two no-bits. There were two no-bits. We had selection committee meetings, we had internal negotiation meetings, which are all recorded, we had meetings with the highest-ranked, we had several negotiation meetings, and then on November 27th, we posted an award recommendation. Five proposals were Advanced Disposal Services with Public Services of Florida, Progressive Waste Solutions, Waste Pro Florida, and Waste Management, Inc., the incumbent vendor. After the selection committee met, they, and had their deliberations, they ranked Waste Management as the highest-ranked proposal with 681 points, and Republic as number two, and Advanced Disposal Services with, as number three. So we entered into negotiations, and these are some of the highlights of the contract that we negotiated. Again, the contract is for 10 years with no options to renew. After the 10-year term, we'll have to go back out and do another RFP. The current agreement is a 12-year term, so this is two years shorter. There are no automatic rate increases. There's a rate adjustment clause based on the Producer's Price Index, which will adjust the rates up or down depending on the movement of that index, and that index is specific to solid waste collection. And over the past 10 years, the average annual change for that committee code has been like 1.9%. During the first year of the contract, from April 2018 to March 2019, there have been no adjustments to the rates. The rates of commercial collection have been increased by less than 10%, and there are no increases to the residential collection rate. Remember, the city pays for the residential rate, so there's no impact on the city's budget for this new agreement, for the first year. And again, the new agreement takes into consideration the projected future growth of the city over the next 10 years. These are the rates that were negotiated, and again, you see the, the residential rates remain the same, and the commercial collection rates show an increase of 9.89% to 9.96%, just under 10%. We compared our rates with other communities, neighboring communities that Waste Management also serves, and you can see our prices are very competitive when compared to them. Waste Management is one of the largest environmental providers in the country, in fact, the largest. They serve over more than 21 million municipal customers, and in U.S. and Canada, they've been our vendor for more than 10 years. And in the most recent Resident Opinion survey, we showed an 80% satisfaction rate for city services that includes, includes solid waste collection services. And staff is recommending approval. Are there any questions?
Thank you. I will close the hearing. May I get a motion in a second to approve, please?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I'll bring it back for discussion and I'm sure there'll be some questions. So, Michelle, I'll start with you. I always seem to start this way.
You always start this way.
Okay, Carl, we're all start with you.
You didn't start with me for a long time. Let her go.
Kumra, I'm just, my only thought on this, on a 10-year contract, I mean, do we get better rates because longer the contract? Is that why we're going this direction? And what was the, what was the, because I'm still new to absorbing this particular contract. So what, what was the parameters of the contract before? And I'm, I'm kind of getting the feel we're getting a better rate to kind of knock off a, an extension? Can you explain that to me, please?
The rationale behind the 10-year term is want to make the contract attractive to all the persons who are potential proposals, to make it attractive. So it's not like a five-year term and then you have the option to renew, but you may not exercise that option to renew for another five years. So you make it 10 years, so it's attractive to anybody who's going to propose on this. Why is it attractive? Because then you're going to put in a lot of capital investment in this. A lot of the firms, the contract has certain requirements in terms of the age of the equipment. So vendors have to put money together to, let's say we didn't go with Waste Management, we had to go with a new vendor. That vendor has to now put in money into buying equipment and stuff, setting up disposal sites, whatever, operations and stuff like that. And that 10 years gives them some kind of time, good enough time, reasonable time to recoup their investment in those capital in, equipment.
And our presentation is better as opposed to what it was in the past, being an eight-year contract with a five-year extension option?
We had, we actually had seven with a five. Right, seven and five. So we had, we had 12 years, right? So this is just 10 years. We had an issue then where the inspector general felt like the city shouldn't have renewed that option to renew. But the option to renew existed in the contract. The city has that business decision to make and city made that business decision. And in making that business decision, the city also sat on Waste Management and negotiated several million dollars in savings over the past five years. So it worked out for the city very beneficially.
Understood. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
And a lot of the vendors who probably complained and said, oh, I should have gotten a shot, got their shot now and they didn't offer prices competitive as Waste Management.
Understood. That, you got me where I needed to be. Thank you.
Mark?
I see Jeff behind you. Can I ask you a question? We had just made a, you made a comment to me earlier tonight about the fleet. Can you just tell me a little bit about the fleet that you are replacing? And I don't know if he was sworn in. I don't know if he, he doesn't, I'm sorry. It's late.
We're learning.
It's a resolution. Sorry. You had made a comment and intrigued me. If you could just kind of repeat that real quick.
Good evening. For the record, Jeff Saban, Waste Management, Madam Mayor and Counsel. Pleased to be here representing Waste Management. Along with me is my backup team. These are our ops guys that make it happen every day where the rubber meets the road. Mike DeClerc, Senior District Manager, and Jack Connor. He's Senior District Manic Waste Management in Palm Beach. Yes, and I think, first off, I'd just make a real brief comment and commend staff for the incredible process that put all the proposed vendors through and, and ended in a negotiation that was very difficult, but, but tough and fair. Thank you. Yeah, I said I'm still bruised. But, and Vice Mayor Marceano, to answer your question, the comment, and also it ties to Kumra's addressing of the 10-year term for the capital costs. And yes, Waste Management is leading the nation and industry in converting our fleets from diesel to compressed natural gas. And that is the intent of the fleet servicing the City of Palm Beach Gardens to improve those, those trucks and actually improve them with brand-new trucks powered by compressed natural gas. So the fleet will be converted and that is the plan and that's a sizable capital investment made for complying with the contract requirements. So that is, that is part of our initiative as a company for sustainability purposes, but also candidly, the compressed natural gas vehicles run more efficiently, cleaner and, and less maintenance costs. So there's a lot of benefits.
In 10 years from now, there may be electric garbage trucks that we can...
We may be having those discussions.
Cleaner is better, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew?
Anecdotally, I was at a party yesterday and I was discussing the fact that I was talking about this contract, a whole grouping of people at this party. And everyone had so much to say about how much they loved Waste Management, what a great job y'all are doing. So I can tell you the residents, and this was a lot of people, were all so complimentary of the great work that you're doing and how happy they are with your services. And it dovetails into my question. And I always ask Kumra four questions at, at every agenda review. The first question is always, what vendors did you consider? The second question is, why did you choose this vendor? The third question is, is this the lowest bidder? And the fourth question is, why did you choose this vendor if they weren't the lowest bidder? So my question here is, what criteria did you employ in, in assessing Waste Management versus the other bidders? And why did you choose Waste Management?
Okay, first, I didn't choose them. That may come as a shock.
The committee chose...
The selection committee made the choice. When we advertised selection, when we advertised the requested proposals, the requested proposal has an evaluation criteria. The evaluation criteria is broken down into technical section and the pricing section. Usually the pricing section only carries about 20 points out of 100 or more, so about 20% of the entire score. The other sections look at the company's performance, how many contracts they have, the kind of vehicles they have, their history, their philosophy, who they're going to assign as a team and their finances, et cetera, to show that they have the financial backing on all the things. And all of those are weighted and the selection committee, each member of the selection committee votes and makes their independent review and then scores accordingly based on the weight for each category. So it's not a bid where it's the lowest price, but in this case, Waste Management gave us the most competitive pricing and we're going to negotiate even better, lower rates.
Thank you, Kumra.
Okay, you're welcome, sir.
Guess it's my turn. Something that we talked about earlier that you didn't put in your presentation, but I picked up when I was reading the contract, was that the city buildings and the city properties are actually being taken care of free of charge as part of this contract.
That is correct.
So it would be much more expensive if we had to pay for the city services as well as the rest.
That is correct. Any other questions?
Hurry up, Maria.
Apologize. It's been a long night. Kumra and Jeff, a couple of things. It was a very concise presentation, all 66 pages. And I did learn some things that I was very impressed with. The fact that you do handicap person pickup, I think is fabulous. So I don't know if people are aware of that and if they're not, I don't know if there's a way to get them to know that, but you actually go to their door and pick up their trash. I think that's phenomenal. And I'm also very happy that you do, when we have our community service events, you supply the retain, the containers for free. Is that how I read that? Yes.
That's correct.
Okay. I, being somebody who is very involved with what's going on in our community, especially events that affect children, I'm always looking for community partners. And not that this council here had anything to do with how you got chosen, but I do applaud you for coming in with a price that fits our budget and working with our staff or them working you over. I should say, thank you for allowing them to work you over. But I am all in favor of this. One more thing. The, you were talking about the fleet. Did I read right? Trucks are no older than seven years that you have in your fleet? Okay. Perfect. All right. Did I bring up anybody else's questions? Are we all good? All right. So hearing no further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five, nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. On behalf of our, all of our employees, we appreciate our public partner, partnership with the City of Palm Beach Gardens and it can go into the future. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Now we are on item 11, items for council action and discussion. So we've had a long meeting and I'm, I'm not sure if anybody has anything else that they would like to share or address, but I will open up the floor if there is discussion to be had. We don't have to, but we can.
The request that was made by Mr. Easton earlier, is that something that has to be addressed?
Michelle, we need you to speak.
I said the request that was made by Mr. Easton earlier, does that need to be addressed?
Is that a city, is that a attorney answer?
As a mediation, the council authorized us to negotiate the settlement. We negotiated the settlement. Mr. Easton had the benefits of an attorney at the mediation and we have a signed settlement agreement. The matter is resolved.
Okay. That's all I needed to know.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Okay. City Attorney, do you have a report?
No, ma'am.
Well, at 10:25, I will now adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much.